Welcome to the Committee of the Whole Meeting of the Cape Coral City Council. Today is April 13, 2022. This meeting now comes to order. Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, undivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Madam City Clerk, please call the roll.
Yes, Your Honor. Before I call the roll, Councilmember Nelson will be arriving after roll call, and I will mark her so. Mayor Gunter?
Here.
Councilmembers Costin?
Here.
Hayden?
Here.
Long?
Here.
Shepherd?
Here.
Tate?
Here.
Welsh?
Here.
Seven Preston and one excused.
Thank you. Item four is business. Four A is citizens' input. Citizens' input time is a maximum of 60 minutes is set for the input of citizens on matters concerning city government. Three minutes per individual. Please remember to state your name. We'll be utilizing the podium to the left. Anyone who wants to participate in citizens' input, please come forward.
Good morning, Mr. Mayor and Councils and City Manager. Thank you guys for having us this morning. My name is Kevin Besser, and I am the Director of Public Policy for the Royal Palm Coast Realtors. I'm here to talk to you all about the storm shutter ordinance that's been proposed. I have to tell you, I've been to three of these meetings, and this being the third, this third draft of this ordinance, I feel like we're moving backwards and not forwards. I think you've heard from many homeowners, the last three meetings, that the public does not want this ordinance. They like how things are right now. They like to be able to protect their homes, especially our seasonal residents who have the right to protect their homes while they're not here. Our seasonal residents won't have the ability to come back and forth, putting up hurricane shutters and taking them down. And they also like the peace of mind and the safety that it covers for their home while they're gone. We have a lot of other issues with this ordinance. I know I've met with city staff last week with a bunch of my members, and they were able to talk about issues that they had. Insurance companies, I mean, a lot of our homeowners across the city get huge discounts on their insurance. And I cannot tell you guys this, we have an affordability crisis right now in this city and in our region. It's all because of insurance. So I think there's a lot of different issues with this ordinance. I think that we are, again, taking a step back and not a step forward with this ordinance. And I hope we can see another draft and continue to move forward and look for a solution to a problem. I think this is a solution to a problem that doesn't really exist. So, thank you very much.
Thank you, sir.
My name is Larry Culver. I'm a seasonal resident here. I'm from Iowa. We came from Iowa. We purchased a house down here eight years ago, and the first thing we did was we spent $24,000 putting roll-down shutters on the house to protect it when we're not here. We don't have time to put shutters on and take them off when we come down. And we figure that's protection in a lot of situations. It protects the house from theft, and it protects it, you know, we have peace of mind if a hurricane would come when we're back in Iowa. And most of them that have been in the area, we was already, we was back in Iowa at the time. So, we don't have a, if there's a waiver of, to sign or something like that, we would be in favor of that, but we are not in favor of, I don't know how you're gonna, you know, raise and lower your shutters. Ours are motorized, so they're permanently on there. And we use them a lot when we're down here, just to kind of keep the sun out, to protect, you know, kind of heat, keep the heat bill, or the cool, cooling down a little bit, so. So, I just want you to, everyone to keep that in mind, that we're a little bit concerned about this ordinance. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
My name is Jennifer DeRozier. I'm a local broker-owner, and I also serve on public policy. And this is very concerning to me as a broker and as a citizen. The people that I work with primarily are just normal, everyday homeowners. I don't work often with investors or extremely wealthy. I would say mid-range income people. And that matters because some of my customers have had to move out of Cape Coral for work. As you know, with the economy, you go where the job is. They love their homes and opted to keep them here. And this is two separate people that I've worked with. This would force them to hire property management or choose to come into an area that is unsafe just to comply with an ordinance like this, even with the 30 days. And I'm thinking of Irma, we had significant debris, flooding, power outages. So, we're talking about making people leave safe conditions to come to unsafe conditions or force fines. So, that would be a terrible undue burden of cost. And also, my other concern is the infringement on basic property ownership rights, particularly the right of enjoyment and the right of control. And I understand a city is able, within reason, to have ordinances that people comply with. But the idea that a single woman can't keep hurricane shutters down in her bathroom for safety without the possibility of being fined, or the idea that, like this gentleman said, just to use the, you know, it's a lot of money to put in automatic shutters. And so, to not be able to use those at will is a concern. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Good morning, Mr. Mayor, City Councilmembers, City Manager. My name is Patrick Quinlan. I am the broker-owner of Harbor Shores Realty and Property Management, and I reside in the Cape for 25 years, down in Unit 64. From my personal experience in 2017, when Hurricane Irma was approaching, we were managing about a dozen properties, and we couldn't get half of them covered with hurricane shutters because there were no general laborers out there. Everybody was so busy trying to shutter up last minute. And so, had those shutters been up ahead of time, we wouldn't have had to deal with that issue. On a personal level, living down in beautiful Unit 64, I can tell you that many of our neighbors are seasonal residents, that leave in May and come back in October, and they put their shutters down. Some of them have even painted them to match the trim on their homes. It's beautiful. It doesn't affect us at all. It doesn't bother me or the rest of our neighbors. I feel good for those seasonal residents, that they have that peace of mind, that they can go back to their homes up north and know that their homes are protected down here. So, I am not, I do not like the language in this particular ordinance. So, please keep that in mind as you're doing your decision-making. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Anyone else wishing to speak during citizens' input, please come forward.
Yes, my name is Michael Kivak. I think this ordinance opens the city up to a lot of litigation, because if I have to live in my house during a hurricane, because I have to put the shutters up, come down, put the shutters up, if I die, my wife will sue the city because of this ordinance. If my house is broken into, I'm gonna sue the city. And if I don't have shutters up, because if someone promised they'd put them up, and my house is destroyed, I'm gonna sue the city. That's all I have to say.
Thank you, sir. Anyone else wishing to speak, please come forward.
Good morning. My name is Edward Caden. I'm a resident here of Cape Coral and moved here a little less than a year ago. One of my primary reasons for moving here was the quality of life in this community. Unfortunately, this new regulation that's being proposed regarding the storm shutters is a real concern. Subsection three, I believe it is, of the regulation, talking about a residential dwelling not actively used as a place of residence for a period of exceeding 72 continuous hours, is allowed to have the shutters up for that entire period of time. That is a quality-of-life issue. It creates an eyesore, which the non-residents get to enjoy. They get to enjoy protecting their property while they live out of state at the expense of the people who live here. That is a concern. That rule actually consumes the remainder of the regulation. It erodes the purpose, which is to create less of an eyesore for this area. Look, the law permits the state and the city to favor its citizens over citizens of another jurisdiction. I'll give you an example, quickly. Every state that I'm aware of has a state-university system. It has two rates for the tuition, one favoring in-state and one for out-of-state residents. There's a huge disparity in the amount of money that's charged to out-of-state residents wishing to consume the services of a great educational system. Essentially, that's the same thing that's happening here. You have an absolute obligation to protect the citizens of Cape Coral and protect this area, as opposed to worrying about the concerns of out-of-state residents who enjoy the luxury of having a property here in this great state and enjoying the provisions of this great community while creating an eyesore that I have to live with and my fellow citizens have to live with 24 hours a day, seven days a week, for the entire year. I urge you to reject that portion of this regulation. I would also just point out, too, that when you have shuttered-up buildings like this, it creates what's in the law enforcement community called the "broken windows" theory. It invites crime. It's an unoccupied area that just says, no one's here to look at what you're doing because there is, there's no one here. It's a boarded-up building. It invites crime. Having spent 35-plus years in law enforcement in California, retiring as an executive level, Governor appointee, I tell you from personal experience, this regulation that permits boarded-up residences in our communities is a serious problem. Again, I urge you to reject this amendment as proposed. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
My name is Gordon Nguyenfeldt. I'm a permanent resident of Cape Coral. I wasn't gonna get up and speak, but after what I just heard from the last gentleman, I wish to dispute that. I'm a 25-year veteran of law enforcement. When a house is secured and the shutters do a benefit of not only hurricane prevention, but also security for the home, the individuals who would break into a resident, they are not going to go to that residence. They don't want it hard, they want it easy to break into a resident. So, having something secured with these shutters over the windows, I will not typify as being boarded up. I would typify that as being secured. So, I wish to dispute that particular analogy of the boarded-up window theory. That is a valid theory for certain circumstances, but not for this circumstance. This is not only a benefit to the community for having their lower insurance, having this peace of mind for those who are no longer here, who are back in their residence up north or wherever, but it also keeps the thing secure so they don't have to have break-ins. Criminals aren't gonna go to one that is difficult, or it's gonna take a lot of time. They're gonna go to easy. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Anyone else wishing to speak during citizens' input, please come forward. Seeing none, citizens' input is now closed. Is there any council discussion on citizens' input? I will tell you, for me personally, I appreciate and thank everyone that came out this morning. I will reserve my comments for when we have the discussion, when we get to that portion of the agenda, for myself. Any other council discussion? Okay, seeing none, we'll move on to the first item of discussion. For number B1 is the continuation of the storm shutter ordinance discussion. Mr. City Manager.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, Members of City Council, Members of the public. Good morning. Welcome to today's work session. Just as a reminder to our visitors this morning, this is a work session of City Council. It is not a voting session. So, what we're doing here is engaging in dialogue with the public and members of the City Council to get input on helping us draft a proposed ordinance. So, this is not a final version that will be voted on today. I just want to make that absolutely clear to folks. So, allow me five seconds to bring the presentation up. It keeps going off the screen. Okay, I'm gonna need you in a second after the third slide. Mr. Mayor, Members of City Council, you heard this morning from one of our guest speakers that this is in response to a problem that does not exist. I'm gonna go ahead and repeat some of the comments that I made earlier in this process when we talked about why we even brought this issue forward. I mentioned, I believe, last time we had this discussion, I recounted for you an article from 2014 in a media, from a media outlet in the Orlando market that indicated, I believe, since 2002, there were over 14 deaths statewide as a result of individuals dying in house fires because their homes were boarded up, even though they were not under a threat of a hurricane. Children, elderly, and adults were victims of these house fires because they couldn't get out, and firefighters could not get in. So, I ask you, is that a problem that doesn't exist? And again, I recited those figures from 2014. I haven't looked to see how many other deaths have occurred from 2014 through today. The driving factor behind us moving forward and essentially following what numerous communities, I would estimate probably 45, 50, 60 communities in Florida have already done, they've passed ordinances that regulate when people can have storm shutters up, is because I think we all recognize that there is a safety element associated with occupied structures having these storm shutters up. In fact, your fire chief mentioned the difficulty that firefighters experience trying to remove these shutters, but in addition, the danger that these shutters present to first responders when they're inside a structure and have difficulty getting out. So, Mr. Mayor, ladies and gentlemen, they say that a picture is worth a thousand words. So, I'm gonna show you some pictures today. Here is a photograph of the house fire that I responded to in December of 2020 that led me to have a conversation with the fire chief and all of you as to why we should pursue an ordinance similar to what has been done by other communities statewide. Now, imagine, if you will, for a second, you're sitting in the living room, you're watching TV, God forbid something happens, lightning bolt hits your house, you have an electrical short, and your means of escape through the front door are blocked, as was the case in this fire on December 20th. And so, what you're seeing there is a lookout. This is what an occupant would see if they needed to evacuate that room that they were in in order to get out. That's what you see. You see the hurricane panels there. And so, therefore, in this particular case, a panel was able to be removed, I assume, by our fire department as they responded. But think for a second, if that entire opening was covered by those storms, those storm shutters, you wouldn't be able to get out of that home, and it would take, I would estimate it probably would add another two to three minutes for firefighters to take those panels off that window covering in order to be able to break the window or the door just to get in. And when we talk about fires, Mr. Mayor, Members of City Council, we know that time is of the essence. Every minute counts. And in fact, this year, when you approved the budget for the city of Cape Coral, you added additional positions in the fire department because you wanted to maximize the number of staff on a fire engine, because you recognized that speed and staffing is essential on fire calls. You recognized that adding that fourth person to that fire engine provided us an opportunity to be able to do an interior attack with additional staffing in less time to effectuate a rescue. This ordinance does the same thing. It saves our firefighters' time when they're responding to fires in occupied residences and have to deal with unnecessary obstructions in trying to rescue an individual that might be trapped in a burning structure. So, again, I show you these pictures from December 20th. If you were sitting in that, in that room, does the problem not exist? I want to show you some other photographs that were taken, not necessarily in Cape Coral, but I think it helps paint the picture of what we're talking about by allowing storm shutters or other approved windstorm devices on a, on a structure. Now, I recognize these two pictures are not from Cape Coral, but the point is the same. Having plywood on a structure, correct me if I'm wrong, building official Popowski, is allowable under the building code. So, I ask you, if your neighbor boarded up their, their home so they can go on vacation or go back up north, would you want to look at this? Would you want firefighters to have to deal with this in the event of a fire to save somebody that is trapped in a building that is occupied? Again, a picture is worth a thousand words. So, we started this conversation, Mr. Mayor, Members of Council, again, because we were concerned about fire safety. Also, the Florida building code already prohibits storm shutters from being installed unless there's a threat of a storm. I didn't make that language up. I think we quoted the Florida building code. So, regardless of whether City Council moves forward with drafting an ordinance that helps to define what's already in the building code, you are already prevented from having your shutters up on a, on a permanent basis. It's in the Florida building code. It's also mentioned in the Florida Fire Prevention Code, and the Florida Fire Prevention Code prohibits shutters to be in a closed position on structures, correct me if I'm wrong, Chief Rayborn, beyond one and two family dwellings. So, again, building code already prohibits it, the fire code already prohibits it. And lastly, when we first started this conversation, Chief Sizemore stood at this podium, and he mentioned what's called attractive nuisances. And I think the one, a law enforcement official that came to the podium, I don't want to put words in his mouth, but I think that's what he was alluding to when he mentioned the broken windows theory. These photographs, I would argue, are an attractive nuisance in a particular community. Again, it shows the structure is boarded up, there's nobody home, there's nobody watching. I'll, I'll bring up some other examples. Here are examples locally in the Cape. And I want to thank one of our media outlets, because I took, I copied these photographs from their website. Again, these are photographs, I believe they're in the, one is in the Cape, I don't know where the other one is. So, are, is this an attractive nuisance? I believe the home on, it'll be my right, indicates that the house is probably occupied, because as you can see, there is a sliding glass door behind that white PVC fence that does not have a panel up. So, here, you're looking at hurricane panels that are clearly discolored. You're seeing that probably one of the panels are not properly affixed to the structure itself, which is a violation of the Florida building code. And on the photograph here, on the one to my left, it also shows that the panels are probably loose as well. So, I would argue, is this an attractive nuisance? If you had to live next to this home, would you consider this to be a blinding influence in your community, especially if the home is occupied? Now, I think we can make a logical reason to exempt homes that are unoccupied, and I think we've accomplished that in our latest draft, but more on that in a second. So, I just want to go through a few more photos if I can, Mr. Mayor. And so, here's another example. I don't know if this is in the Cape or not, but I can tell you that when I moved to the Cape and I was in the real estate market, I toured a lot of homes, and I toured a lot of lots that were available for sale, and I probably encountered this situation more than I would have liked. And I was very disappointed, and I would tell you that I did not inquire about homes and properties that I was looking at, because who wants to live up, live next to a boarded house, a boarded-up house in January that's covered with, with plywood that looks like this? So, I argue, is that an attractive nuisance? So, I ask you, is this a problem that does not exist? So, let me go back to the presentation. All right, now, we're gonna talk about the new draft version that's before you that incorporates a lot of the feedback that staff heard during our last two discussions. But before I get into that conversation, I want to show you a picture here on the left-hand side where you see firefighters, I don't want to say struggling, but working very diligently to remove the hurricane panels that are on a structure. Now, you can see by the amount of smoke that's pouring out through the eaves that this fire has been burning for a while, and it is definitely hot, and it is definitely, what as the firefighters like to say, it's definitely cooking in there. And we know, and Chief Rayborn, I don't remember from my days in the fire academy, that time is of the essence when we're dealing with structure fires. And if I remember correctly, within three minutes, if the, if the fire gets hot enough, we have what's called, we have a situation that can be called flashover, correct? And that means the minute you introduce oxygen into that structure, basically what you have is a, is a firebomb. It's an explosion. So, again, time is of the essence, and that's why it is important to ventilate so we can lower the temperature inside a structure, but again, more importantly, so we have a means of entering the structure to do a rescue, and also a means to escape a structure in the event that our firefighters and first responders need to get out. So, as you see here, you have multiple firefighters attempting to remove these panels off of the window. I think the firefighter closest to us is probably using a drill with a, with an attachment on it, if it has one of the wing nuts that you can hopefully easily remove the panel from the structure. Keep in mind, these panels are made out of metal, and metal gets extremely hot during the fire. So, what has changed in this draft as opposed to the two drafts that we've discussed with you previously? So, basically, it goes to the premise that the Florida building code says you cannot have shutters in a closed position unless you are under a threat of a storm, right? So, we, we started from that. So we started from that, from that requirement that's already in law, that's law that's established by the state of Florida, not local government. And we said, you know what? The problem with the Florida building code is that it's too open-ended. It doesn't provide enough definition for us to be able to enforce that provision. So we went in and we said, okay, let's be logical, let's be practical, and let's allow for some exceptions. And I'll talk a little bit about that in a second. And then, based on the conversation we heard from council, I think it was clear that council also wants, whatever ordinance, should you adopt one, to apply to commercial structures in addition to residential structures. So we've addressed that in this latest draft. And then, we were very cognizant of the discussion that we've heard over the last two sessions, but particularly the last session we had, about distinguishing between occupied structures and unoccupied structures. And I think that all of us will agree that we are concerned with all structures and all structure fires, but we're deeply concerned whenever a structure is occupied. And so I think what we heard was that there was a general acceptance of perhaps exempting unoccupied structures, recognizing that we do have a lot of seasonal residents that leave our area and go back up north, and so that is something that we need to take into account. We believe that this version does that. Also, some of you mentioned to us that there are new technologies and new devices that have been implemented in the building industry since the Florida building code required her windborne protective devices beginning in 2002. And we recognize that see-through woven fabric, which is an approved windstorm protection device, does not provide our firefighters with the challenges that storm panels and plywood present. And so therefore, after consulting with the fire chief, we decided that we were going to exempt see-through woven fabrics from this ordinance, should council decide to move forward with it. And lastly, we recognize that sometimes you just have to close your shutters in order to do maintenance, whether you have to lubricate them and clean them, or in the event that you may have a broken window or a broken door, and given all the supply chain challenges that we've been having recently, we understand that you've got to protect your home, so we are allowing exemptions for maintenance and other factors. So that's what's changed between this version and the versions that you have seen previously. And again, that's the beauty of a workshop, a work session. It gives staff the ability to engage in a conversation with city council so we could work through the issues before something is introduced formally for a vote. So let me go back and define what a storm shutter is. For the purposes of this ordinance, and in keeping with the spirit of the building code, it's essentially a device that is placed over an opening in a structure that is designed and intended to protect the interior of the structure or residence from wind damage. And if you notice, the language there is in bold font because that's what all these devices are for. Now, you've heard people throughout our various workshops come up and say, well, I use it to reduce energy consumption. I use it to keep the sun out. I use it to block noise. I use it as a burglary prevention device. That's fine, but that's not the purpose of these devices. In the building code, it mentions that these devices are there to provide protection of structures from the wind. That's the only purpose. When you apply for a building permit, you are applying for a building permit under that premise. So again, a storm shutter, their sole purpose, their designed and intended purpose is to keep the wind out of a structure. And so the second bullet mentions again that we exclude certain materials from this ordinance, again, the see-through woven fabric screens, canopies, awnings, things of that nature. So, Mr. Mayor, members of city council, when can shutters remain closed under this draft? Well, when the city falls into the official hurricane track that's issued by the National Hurricane Center. So we have to have some sort of guideline to go by. And what is the accepted industry standard that's out there? Well, it's when our friends over at the National Hurricane Center says you need to really be worried about a tropical storm or a hurricane. And so when they communicate to a community and they tell you, hey, you really need to watch this, that's when they issue their official forecast track. So what we're saying is, whenever the Cape comes, falls within that forecast track, and currently it's five days, and hopefully in the future, as technology gets better, the National Hurricane Center and National Weather Service may be able to extend that out even further, but right now it's five days. And so we say that whenever the feds, whenever the National Hurricane Center says that we need to watch out for this storm, that's when we allow shutters to go up. And then we say that we, and we're being very liberal here because when you look at other communities, they're much more restrictive than what's being proposed here, we're saying you can leave your shutters up for 30 days after we come out of that hurricane track, okay? Now, let's say, God forbid, that we are affected by a hurricane or tropical storm. You know that the city can declare a local state of an emergency, and under that local state of emergency, we can waive certain requirements and certain ordinances. So if we were to be directly impacted by our hurricane during that declaration process, we would probably go back and allow people to keep their shutters up in the event that properties were significantly damaged in the Cape. We have the ability to do that. So the statement that, well, we've got to take them down right after a hurricane comes through here and it might still be a dangerous situation, that hurricane, that statement is not an accurate one. We have the ability to adjust based on the conditions. Our last workshop, there were some conversations about tornadoes. Well, this version allows for hurricane shutters to be placed in a closed, secure position in the event we are notified that the National Weather Service issues a tornado warning for Cape Coral. And so the shutters can go up. And what we say in this version, that they can remain up for up to three days, 72 hours, after the tornado warning has lapsed. Third, we've made an allowance to exempt unoccupied residences from having to remove the shutters. We defined what unoccupied means, and we said that if the home is not going to be habitated for a period in excess of 72 hours, then the shutters can remain in a closed position. So we heard loud and clear from our seasonal residents that this impacts their ability to travel back to the Cape and secure the property, and so I think we've made an allowance for that. We've also made an allowance for non-residential structures, mainly commercial structures, that are also vacant and unoccupied, to also be allowed to have their storm shutters up in order to protect their property. We also say that you can keep them up for 24 hours if you're testing and maintaining them, as I mentioned before, and also as a result of a broken window or a broken window. This version also includes some maintenance standards that the previous versions did not include. First, we want to make it absolutely clear that hurricane shutters, any type of windborne protective devices, need to comply with the Florida building code. All structures must comply with that. And structures that have three or more residences must comply, and commercial structures must comply with the Florida Fire Prevention Code. So again, those two pieces of legislation trumps this ordinance in the event that passes. So they need to meet the requirements of the building code. We also believe that these devices need to be free of discoloration, rust, graffiti, mold, mildew, and any type of markings. And you have already in another ordinance, you have prohibitions against all of these when it comes to property maintenance standards. So we are essentially continuing the restrictions or the standards that you've already adopted in your property maintenance standards, and we're applying them to the hurricane shutters. We're also saying that when they are closed, these devices need to be properly secured, and all the panels have to be in place, okay? I think I showed you a photograph earlier where I think two-thirds of the window opening was covered with panels, and then there was a third missing. What we're saying is, no, you've got to cover the entire opening with the panels, okay? And that essentially is the same for number four. So, Mr. Mayor, members of council, thank you for allowing me to go over this latest version, and we are happy to answer any questions that you may have. Thank you.
Thank you. I now open up a discussion for council. Councilmember Long.
Thank you, Mayor. So thank you, Mr. Hernandez, for that presentation. As you probably recall, I was on board with this when we originally brought it forward. However, I'm no longer on board. I think that we continue to waste staff's time in the direction that this is going. It's so diluted now to the point where it's almost against its intended purpose to move forward with the allowance of the shutters to remain up for non-residents or seasonal residents. I'd wager that's a large portion of the subset that we're trying to identify here when we're trying to get these shutters down. So if we don't do anything, that allowance is already there. And on the other end of that, if we do move forward and explicitly allow for that, we're explicitly allowing for something that you have come up here before us time and again and said is prohibited by the building code. Do you understand where I'm going with that? If we're, if we do nothing, it's already in the building code, but if we do something by saying, oh, they can do this, and it's against the building code, then what purpose are we serving by moving forward, other than some of the other small pleasantries that we've included as far as upkeep and things like that? I just don't see a reason to continue to devote, in my opinion, important staff time to something that's clearly going in the direction of not really having much teeth.
Any other discussions from council or councilmember Shepard?
The National Hurricane Center tells us to prepare when hurricane season starts. So people prepare, they put their shutters up, and in some cases, they leave some off because they're thinking of safety so they can get out of their home. They get generators ready, they get extra supplies of water, and they prepare. Now, we're telling them with this, well, we don't want you to prepare until a couple days before the storm. Well, I've lived here where we've had very short notice of storms that were unforeseen. We have, we have a building code that we were educated on that's not being enforced already, you know? We have people that jaywalk and, you know, are killed sometimes, and that's a law. And when it comes to fire, you know, that is a situation, but that's a situation where people have to think for themselves. I don't think it's the government's responsibility to do things like this. If anything, we should educate people. If you're putting your shutters up ahead of time because you don't have the ability to put them up last minute, well, then, keep, think of ways to get out of your house and have a plan, you know? So I think as a local government, we should help educate our public on how it's unsafe if all your shutters are up and you're still living in the house. So I think that's good that we educate our residents on that, you know? But what we also have is we're going to add more ordinances that we can enforce in the first place. So why go through all this if we don't even have the ability to enforce it? When you see all the variables of the ordinance, it would be a nightmare for anybody to even try to enforce it when our enforcement people are already overwhelmed with ordinances that we already have that aren't being enforced. So I will not be in support of this. Thank you.
Councilmember Cosgrove.
Thank you, Mayor. I actually think this is a great compromise based on what we saw last time and the time before. This is totally different, and I appreciate the unoccupied part. That's my biggest concern, and I think it completely takes away the issues raised by the snowbirds. But can you help explain to me and the public, Mr. City Manager, why we can't enforce the building code or why we can in a very limited way?
So councilmember, we can enforce the building code, and we do enforce the building code. However, we are limited in how we enforce the building code. So I can only use building inspectors that are certified under state law to enforce the building code. As you know, we have only so many certified building inspectors, and right now, they're concentrating on dealing with the incredible demand that we are having here in the Cape associated with new construction. So the communities across the state that have adopted these ordinances have adopted a municipal ordinance so that they can allow anybody that the community designates a code enforcement officer, and that includes building officials, that includes police officers, that includes your normal code enforcement officers, to enforce a municipal ordinance rather than the building code. It makes it easier for communities to enforce.
That is a good answer. Thank you.
And I do just want to also state that in the building code, again, one of the reasons we're having this discussion is because the building code is very vague in what it determines to be a threat of a storm.
Right. And again, you said it was also in the Fire Prevention Code?
Yes.
Who enforces that?
So the Fire Prevention Code is enforced by our fire marshal, and Chief Rayborn is here. He's able to answer any questions with regard to the fire prevention.
Basically, my question is, can only one person in the city enforce that, or are there people in the fire department that can besides him?
Oh, we have an entire section in the fire department, the fire marshal's office. They enforce the fire prevention code.
Finally, some of the people that complained in the first meeting, I think their concerns are still not addressed. The permanent residents here who are elderly or disabled would have to possibly put up, take down six times during hurricane season under these rules. And I think that's a problem, and when I think about my old neighbor who was elderly and used to just put them up at the very beginning and take them down at the very end of the season, I think that's reasonable for people who just don't have the means or resources. So that's something that's concerning to me, but otherwise, I really appreciate the work you've put into this to make it more reasonable.
So if you can recall, councilmember, in a previous draft, we did, and we got away from that language on this draft, but certainly we could always revisit it. We did make a provision that stated, and I wasn't too comfortable with it, but it stated that once we are in the official hurricane season, which is June 1st through November 30th, we made an allowance that people could have their hurricane panels up. But again, that, and I think the mayor brought it up, that kind of minimized the whole point of the discussion, which was the fire safety element of this.
Right. I hear you. It's a risk benefit, for sure. Okay. So I'm sure you want, you're looking for a consensus, and my answer here is I'm a lot closer to yes than I was, but I'm still not completely there. Thank you.
Councilmember Hayden.
The issues with the Florida building code are what you just stated. It's too loosely defined in terms of what a threat of the storm is. I can make a case that a threat of the storm is anytime a thunderstorm is in the area where winds are high, hail's a possibility, tornadoes could be produced, and that could be under 30% chance, 40% chance. So I can make a case that tomorrow or Friday, when we're supposed to get rain, could be a threat of the storm. So the Florida building code may have some things that work and allow us to do our job effectively in enforcement, but certainly not under the definition of threat of the Reason I'm so torn on this one is, for me, it started with the baseline of if any life is in danger, whether it's a first responder or a resident, the price is too high. We've listed examples of where the fire department showed up at a house, and they were prevented entry because of storm shutters. So that risks a life, that risks a life right there. Although we're closer, here's the thing, I can start with that premise, and we can talk about we're getting closer, we're getting closer, we're getting closer, but to get to councilmember Long's point, are we really ever going to get there for something that's as close to perfect as we can possibly get? Well, we're not going to get there. You know, if the ultimate goal here is to protect lives, then allowing the seasonal residents to keep their shutters up... residents to keep their shutters up during the time that they were gone and they're not there, then we're eliminating that factor of saving a life. If we're, use that premise to talk about occupied dwellings, people that are living here full-time, and we put in parameters of when they can put those up and take them down, then, yes, we have the potential of saving a life because that dwelling is occupied. I think as a council, we're just going to have to decide the risk factor of life as opposed to what these shutters look like when they're up on a home. Most shutters these days are rolled down. Residents mention that they put them up, they take them down, they match the color of the house, they look nice. I think the whole intention here was to focus on the metal shutters or plywood, and do we have enough of those in the area that this is presenting a challenge? So, to me, it boils down to saving a life and understanding the needs of our seasonal residents, and if we really want to continue this discussion. I don't know that we're ever going to get there, and I'm on the fence, and I don't know which way to go off of that fence right now. I'll listen to the remainder of my colleagues and see if that helps change where I'm at.
Thank you. Councilmember Tate.
Thank you. I, too, am on the fence. I don't think that I can support it at this point, but I have several questions. So, in our nuisance abatement law, we keep referring to the wood, the ugly metal, the, in our nuisance abatement ordinance, does it cover these type of unsightly structures or unsightly shutters? And if not, could it be in there to alleviate that? Because if we go back to the original, the Florida building code, the problem I see with the Florida building code is that the threat of storm is not defined. So, in this ordinance, we have defined it. When you purchase a home in Cape Coral, if you're purchasing a more affordable property, you get wood shutters. I mean, it's mandated, you've got to get something. And then, some people get the aluminum ones. So, if we have them on there, and those pictures that you showed that are really unattractive, so can you answer that question? Is it covered in nuisance abatement as to condition of the property?
I'm going to take a first stab at that. I am not giving you a legal answer because I'm going to ask the attorney to follow up.
She's going to go, why?
But, based on my understanding of what's in the nuisance abatement ordinance, no, this is not covered. And also, I want to remind you that the state legislature has limited your ability to address architectural design details, color, things like that, when it comes to one and two residential units. So, I believe that as long as these devices meet the requirements of the Florida building code, regardless of whether they're unsightly, regardless of whether it's plywood that isn't painted to match the color of the home, that for the purposes of this discussion, I don't believe that we could restrict it. That's just my opinion. I'll defer to Dolores.
So, Dolores, I know, we have things like the paint chipping, the cracking, the screens ripped. Could we not identify this in the nuisance abatement ordinance as unsightly or unkept or something like that?
Well, what you're describing that we currently have is related to maintenance.
Right.
So, it's not that I painted my house an ugly color, it's that my house, whatever color it is, is now falling into disrepair, and those are really two different things. So, unsightly, unsightly, or not as aesthetically pleasing to some people, shutters is really a different thing than dilapidated or half-falling off, because those are just two different issues. And aesthetics is much harder to regulate than inoperability or dilapidated state and things of that kind.
So, disrepair?
But I would agree with him, it doesn't currently do it.
Okay. So, disrepair, though, is it something that we could add in to the nuisance abatement ordinance somewhere down the line?
For hurricane shutters generally, or do you mean generally for other things? Because generally, that's part of what our code currently does, is it already talks about dilapidated and...
Right. So, that's what I'm saying. So, I think that's kind of in there, if I'm not mistaken. I just, I just think that, thank you for addressing so many of the citizens' concerns, but I just think we've spent so much time on this, and we've got the public so riled on this, that I'm just not sure we're going to get there. So, I don't know where we go from here. I know you want consensus. My consensus would be, I'm still in the middle of the street, and I don't know which way to cross. So, you have addressed the unoccupied residents, you've addressed the sun shades, the vacant commercial, but I just don't know that it's worth the aggravation that we have received and how we're going to solve the problem. So, at this point, I'm still in the middle of the street. Thank you.
Councilmember Welsh.
Thank you, Mayor. Mr. City Manager, thank you for the time you put into this. This is now, I believe, our third discussion, and I think everything that we've brought to you, you have addressed in this current ordinance the way it's written. You've taken all of the citizens' input, you've taken all of our input, and I believe you found a middle ground that a lot of people can agree upon. Whether or not we want to move forward with this ordinance, I think now that it's out and people have seen it, I'm not interested in bringing this up for another Cal meeting. I think all of our concerns have been hit. I think at this point, I'd be ready to move this forward the way it is to an introduction and a public hearing, and then us decide. I don't know if this is going to pass. I believe the council is split on it. It's not going to be an easy vote, but I certainly don't want to take any more staff time or workshop time discussing this. So, thank you for the time you put in. I like it. I think it's okay. I think it's something that everyone can handle. Yes, councilmember Long, it does dilute it quite a bit, but I believe the ultimate goal here is safety, and an occupied structure should not be fully boarded up unless it is during hurricane time, and I've said that from the beginning. So, again, thank you for the time you put in.
Councilmember Nelson.
Thank you, Mayor. I want to, I want to ask a question. I know it's been answered before. Maybe Mr. Rayburn can come up. So, explain again for us and the public, what does the fire department do with hurricane-proof windows? How do you get into those windows?
Okay. So, when we come up to a structure that has shutters up, and actually, any type of restriction on the egress of the building, we would take time to remove them so when the firefighters go in, they have their egress. It's not just for the occupant egress, it's also for firefighters when they enter the building. So, we're not going to put any firefighter's life in jeopardy until we know we have an escape route, should something go wrong inside the building.
So, you have to physically remove those hurricane-proof windows?
Before we put anybody in the building, absolutely.
Gotcha. Okay. And then, thank you. I think I'm good for now. I may call you back up. Thank you. So, then, my other question would be, I know that me personally, and probably some of us up here, have always looked for guidance from the Realtor Association when it came to things like vacation rentals, and they're obviously here in full force or mighty tiny force. But I guess my question is, Mr. City Manager, have we, like, not necessarily had a stakeholders' group, but included them and some of the other folks in discussion, like with staff? Have they, have we met with them? Have we gotten their guidance?
No, we haven't, because quite honestly, I didn't know that this was really much of a concern to the Realtors' industry, especially since this is so common across the state.
Mm-hmm.
I mean, I think we're late to the dance here with this type of ordinance, and so, I mistakenly, my bad on that, mistakenly assumed that there was no opposition in the real estate industry to this type of legislation.
Well, I think, you know, for us, I mean, I would assume that, and councilmember Tate, I'm looking at you, but I would assume that, you know, they're a pretty vocal force in our community, maybe unique, maybe not so unique to any other municipality, but, you know, I would, I would venture to say that, you know, maybe getting some of their input and their opposition and why they're opposed to it, because they do sell to seasonal residents, and I don't know what percentage seasonal residents make up of our entire residency in Cape Coral. I apologize, I don't, I don't know that number. I don't know if you know that number, like, what percentage?
I had heard previously, I validated this number, but I had heard some, at a previous Cal, somebody said 18%.
Okay. I don't know. Is that right, councilmember Tate, or do you know? Is it close? Okay. So, you know, I mean, I, too, I mean, I can't support this the way it's written. I think we have addressed a lot of the concerns. I like, I go back to liking the 30 days before and after hurricane season for unoccupied residents, being able to have those shutters up. I also feel like there would be some specificity in terms of the aesthetics that I think, you know, you've addressed, that the building codes addressed. But I still, I'm, you know, I still, I'm not comfortable with the way it's written currently. Like I said, I do like that piece that we had, or that we had in the ordinance, 30 days before, 30 days after. It addressed the unoccupied, but then, to councilmember Cosd's point, with the elderly, you know, in our community, putting them up 72 hours, I mean, it's no different than any of us, permanent resident, whatever age we are, we would have to put the shutters up 72 hours ahead of time. I think we're close, but I'm not 100% comfortable yet, and I would really recommend, you know, if we haven't already, hearing, hearing the concerns from our Realtor Association, hearing the concerns, because a lot of, I've seen it, I know one vendor who owns a shutter company on commercials, states or past commercials, has stated that, you know, this is security. This also gives you security, right? So, that's the selling point, obviously, and folks have purchased them probably because, hey, yeah, that does secure my home. So, maybe it would be worth a conversation to have with some additional stakeholders before we finalize this. I agree, saving lives is our number-one priority. I believe, I agree that, you know, having, it concerns me when I, when I walk my neighborhood and I see shutters up, and I know folks living inside, it does concern me, and I think that that's our number-one concern. But I just think we still have a little bit more work to do, and you're probably right, we are late to the dance in terms of other municipalities in our state, but I just would like to get maybe a little bit more input before we finalize anything. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. You know, when you take a look at this particular draft here, I think, you know, we're better than where we started, but I think there's much more room for improvement. For me, you know, in my opinion, the reason we're having this discussion is for two particular reasons: safety and aesthetics. When it comes to the safety aspect of it, even if you look at the current draft, you know, if a storm comes through, we're allowing the residents to keep the shutters up for 30 days. That safety component, as soon as that storm goes by, is still present, because what we're doing is we're allowing them to live in that particular occupied residence. So, I don't really think we've totally addressed the safety component thoroughly. Additionally, then you look at the aesthetics component, and, you know, if you take a look at all of the emails that I know that I've received, I can only maybe remember two where our permanent residents had written in to me and expressed a concern for the shutters to be present throughout our community in the hurricane season, or not even the hurricane season, when they leave April, May, and they return in October. A majority of the individuals that have written me personally are the individuals who are those snowbirds that have concerns with not being able to put their shutters up before they leave. And also, I've gotten some emails from residents that are full-time residents that are elderly or on a fixed income and can't put the shutters up repeatedly or take them down throughout the year when a threat of a storm is present. So, I don't think with this current draft, that for me, we're 100% there yet. And I think what we need to do as a council is decide and give staff the direction. We've put a lot of time, a lot of effort. This is our third meeting. I think what we need to ask ourselves, are we ever going to get there where we're 100% on board? I don't think that's going to happen. So, my recommendation would be to table this discussion. We already have the building code that the city manager mentioned. We have the fire protection code. The only main reason we're even having this conversation is because we want our code enforcement officers to be able to enforce it. If it's a life-safety issue, we already have the means available to us to enforce the Florida building code. We just have to have a building inspector go out and do it. So, we already have the means available to us if we feel there's a life-safety issue. And I think that's what, the direction that we should go in. Additionally, I know in the Florida building code, the definition of a storm is not specifically outlined, and that's something that we could lobby our state legislators or the Florida Building Code Commission when they need, I believe, on a biannual basis, and we can ask them to identify exactly what the threat of a storm is. So, I think we have some options available to us where we can still get to where we need to go without enacting a local ordinance. So, for those reasons, I'm in support of just tableing this conversation and maybe go in that particular direction, because the premise of this whole conversation began on safety, and I think we still have the means available to us if we feel there's a public safety with any dwelling within the boundaries of Cape Coral. I see councilmember Cosd has her light on, so I will turn the floor over to her, but I think what we need to do, once this discussion is completed, is go down for each council member to either say, we want to table this discussion, or we want to continue and move forward. In that way, that will give staff the direction, I think, that they're looking for. Councilmember Cosd.
Thank you. Just real quick, if we do decide to table this, how can we help you empower the staff that we do have to enforce the building code and the fire code for the cases that are egregious, where it's obvious there's an entire family living somewhere, it's boarded up year-round?
Well, councilmember, I don't think there's anything else you need to do with respect to that. I mean, we have the staffing in place, so we can enforce the building code and the fire prevention code. We'll just, you know, obviously, make this one of those items that our inspectors consistently look out for. Again, the suggestion made by the mayor, and I'm sorry I didn't cover that earlier, I had meant to remind you that you do have some other options, and he just covered them. You can petition the council that meets regularly to recommend revisions to the building code, and we can make a recommendation that they actually define in the building code, because the building code is very specific as to everything else, right? And for some reason, they, they're not specific here. So, that is certainly an avenue that is available to you.
Okay.
And if council directs us, we will draft a letter and come up with some language requesting that they visit the issue.
Thank you for all your work on this. I know that you put a lot into it, so we appreciate it. Thank you.
Yeah. Also, I'd like to thank the city manager and all the staff for all the work that we've put into this up to this point, and I guess we'll go down the line. We'll start with councilmember Long and try to decide if we're going to table this discussion or move forward for a future discussion. Or, I guess the third option would be to move the draft that's presented today forward in the introduction. And, Mr. City Manager, do you have something you wanted to mention?
No, I'll wait till after the discussion.
So, I think we have basically, what I've heard here today, we have three options.
Yeah, table it for me.
Table.
I don't think it's any better than it is, so, I mean, table it, but, that's, yeah, that's fine.
Table.
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 So, Mr. Mayor, I actually prefer to withdraw it rather than table it. I would prefer that we just withdraw it. I will follow up with our building official and suggest that the...
I will follow up with our building official and suggest that the group, and forgive me for not knowing the official name of the group that looks at revising the building code, that we ask them to take a look at it, possibly suggest some language to them, and that we handle it that way. That way, we finally close the door on this proposed ordinance. But again, let me, I, I'm saying this, and I hope nobody takes this the wrong way, because I'm certainly not being defensive or argumentative. So this, this is going away, this proposed ordinance, but we still have the requirement in the building code that we are obligated to enforce. And so I don't want anybody to think, if they leave here today, members of the public, that this is, that this is dead. It's not. We have it in the building code, we have to enforce the building code. Now, understanding that it's very vague, and I guess what needs to happen is, you know, after the first one or two notices of violation that get sent out, those cases will end up going to the special magistrate. And then the special magistrate will have to make a ruling as to whether it's enforceable or not enforceable, right? And, and then, if the magistrate rules one way, and if the person who's been cited disagrees, then they're going to have to take it to circuit court. That's a dilemma we're in, that's what we were trying to avoid, but that's, that's where we are. It's already on the books.
Okay. Any other discussion?
So could we go ahead and ask you and staff to direct a letter to the Florida Building Code Committee, whoever they are, to further define the threat of storm? And secondly, can we work with our delegation here to see if we can improve language to benefit that? Because if I'm understanding what you're saying, Mr. City Manager, so, not tomorrow, but let's say next week, a resident who's now gone for the summer, who doesn't have their property registered with this city, saying that they vacated, and the building official drives by there and sees their shutters down, and there is no threat of storm, you're explaining to me that we can cite them for a violation?
Yes, and the building code makes no distinction between whether the structure is occupied or unoccupied.
Yeah, now, that is a problem. So, we have not encountered that, though, in all these years, that I know of, correct? We haven't had any cases where we have cited someone for having their shutters down that was a seasonal resident?
I don't know if we have or not.
Okay, I would like to know that, because that would have changed my table discussion.
I suspect that that's something that we have not enforced through the years, given the fact that we see hurricane shutters, more so unoccupied homes, being in the closed position.
Okay, well, that is a dilemma. So, if we start to see that now, I'm going to wonder how that happened, because we haven't seen it all this time. So if we start to see seasonal residents being cited for their shutters being down when there is not a threat of storm, will that not alarm some of us up here? It's like we've now put a notice out there to our building code officials that you've got to start looking for this. And that, to me, is a problem, that we just opened Pandora's Box.
So I think what's happened here, Councilmember, is often a lot what happens like in law enforcement, right? Now, I'll give you an example. When I was in a different community, I would constantly spend a lot of time on the street that we had all kinds of serious crime issues, and lots of prostitution going on, lots of open-air drug dealing, and I would always ask the police officers that were assigned to the beat, how did you not see that? And I think over time, people develop tunnel vision, right? They're so focused on other priorities that they lose track of some of those other issues that are evident, they're in your face, right, but you don't see them. And I think that that's what happened with regard to the hurricane shutters, right? We just were so busy just trying to keep up with demand on, you know, new home construction and so forth, that we haven't paid much attention to things like this. And unfortunately, what ended up happening is, here I am, the new guy in town, and I happened to go to a structure fire with the fire chief, and the first thing I noticed is, well, why do they have home, you know, shutters up when they're home? And, and I mentioned to him that in the other communities that I lived in on the East Coast, over in Broward County, none of those jurisdictions that I lived in or worked for allowed occupied, and in fact, some of them don't even allow unoccupied structures to have hurricane shutters. And I started to ask, well, why haven't we enforced this? And then that's what started this whole snowball. And eventually recognizing, well, we're not addressing it in ordinance, so we've got, we're going to have to address it in ordinance, because the building code just doesn't really give us that definition that we need.
Okay.
So I don't know if I answered the question, maybe I gave you too much information.
No, I think you did answer it, but my, my concern's going to be, now we've elevated the situation, and if we start to see or get complaints from seasonal residents that have been cited for this, or other residents that are cited for this, then maybe we should just table it and not withdraw it, because we may need to bring it back. I think it's going to depend on how many cases we see come before us, I guess is the word, or, or code enforcement issues that come before us, because I believe we've now opened a bigger Pandora's Box. So we'll see, we'll see how quickly the building code officials respond to this type of enforcement. I think we have to see that, and maybe that's why we should not have withdrawn it, or we should just hold on to it for such a time as we see how it plays out.
I'm fine with that.
So, I don't know, that's my concern.
Yeah, I mean, my concern also is, you know, we've, I've lived here for, since 2007, 2008, and this has been going on the whole entire time. So why, all of a sudden, are we getting a building official or the building department, if this was such a concern, what happened about the last twelve, thirteen years I've been here?
Oh, that's right.
And now, all of a sudden, it's a concern. So this doesn't mean you go to Plan B, for me, because that's what that sounds like, unfortunately.
That's exactly what it is.
And so I, I, you know, I wouldn't support going to Plan B. Historically, we haven't done anything over the years. You know, I think our residents, they put shutters up, they know what the risks are, and that's a choice that they made. And, you know, and when you talk about threat of a storm, sitting here, I pulled up weather.com and looked at the next seven days. Tomorrow, fifty percent chance of rain. Saturday, thirty percent chance of rain. Sunday, twenty percent. Monday, forty. Tuesday, twenty. Ten percent on Wednesday. When I look at that, that's threat of a storm. So, if there's no definition of threat of a storm, if we go and cite someone, and they bring their iPhone and they pull up weather.com, I can show you a threat of a storm with a National Weather Association put out. To me, that's a threat of a storm every day. So I think we'd have a hard case to get a conviction on with, with the basis of the, the information that, at least the guidelines that were going on now, that's described in the building code for threat of a storm. So that needs to be identified, I think, before we even do anything, so, that's my opinion on it. Councilmember Hayden.
Yeah, I think that's precisely the reason the Florida Building Code has probably never specifically defined the threat of a storm, because, as I said earlier, a threat of a storm can be any of those situations. You can define a threat of a storm anytime from June 1st to October 31st, where there's a tropical watch warning, hurricane watch warning, that could be considered a threat of a storm. I don't think the Florida Building Code is ever going to go there. I think now we're entering that risky, risky area of creating a problem where one doesn't exist. We're not going to enforce something that we know, right now, is probably unenforceable based on the definition of threat of a storm. So, you know, I don't think there is a problem. You know, it goes back to the basic premise, which I think is the reason why we should just table it, is how many lives are actually in danger because of this? And if we can't fully answer that question, then I don't think we can put into play ordinance that may not be fully effective. So, you know, we can ask our legislatures to look into this, but I doubt that we're the first people that have ever questioned what the threat of a storm is, and I think there's probably a really good reason, and I'd like to know what it is, why they, why they use that, that particular wording to, for the Florida Building Code. So I'm in favor of tabling it for now. Should more information come upon us that is valuable, then we can look at it, but I don't think withdrawing is the right way to go at this point.
Right. And one thing, before I turn the floor over to Councilmember Cosden, I think council's direction, by the consensus, was to table the topic, not withdraw it. Councilmember Cosden.
Thank you. I think the city manager can withdraw it without our consent, can't he? Isn't that part of the process?
Madam City Attorney, I would...
Yes, the city manager is free to withdraw this endeavor. Similarly, even if he withdraws it, if any council member, at some time in the future, thinks that we need to revisit the issue of storm shutters, then that's certainly something that that council member can bring forward, either as an extension of this one, or as a new endeavor.
But I do have a question, though, and I'm sorry to talk again, but there must be a legal precedent with the threat of a storm. Someone must have challenged it in court at some point, right? There must have been some court case involving shutters in the past. Are you aware of any?
I don't think that we've been traveling down that path, but we can certainly look into it and see, in terms of interpretation of the Florida Building Code, has this issue risen to the level where it would be documented as an interpretation? We can look at that, I've got John right here, he'll look into it.
That would be very helpful if we do discuss this again.
I think, Councilmember, that's probably why you have an access, and I can count the six different communities throughout the state that have passed local ordinances because of the vagueness and the inability...
I'm probably the only one up here to say this, but I do want the city manager to use the building code and the fire prevention code to deal with certain cases, occupied homes. I want, I don't, that's a danger, that's an immediate danger. And without this ordinance, he won't be empowered to do that. But under the building code, staff can do that already, and I would urge them to when we see unoccupied, I'm sorry, when we see occupied homes, it's a danger. Thank you.
Councilmember Shepard.
I still think education is the answer, not a new ordinance. I think we need to concentrate on the ordinances that we have to combat blight in our community when it comes to unorderly commercial businesses, with their exterior, with the upkeep of their property, with the things that hurt the value of our community. Let's catch up on, on enforcing them ordinances. And like I said, education. We're all in danger when we walk out our front door every day, and we have to think and protect ourselves. And I think education is the best way we can help our residents, because we can't cover every variable. That's it.
Councilmember Tate.
Yeah, just to threat of storm, you know, where we lived in Bay Shore, we're in the velocity zone. Any day we have a storm is a threat of a storm down there. The winds are ten times stronger than anywhere else, shutters, I have mine down all the time when it's really strong wind. So you have to remember, those of us along the coast are in serious jeopardy of threat of storm every time it comes off the river in the wrong way. Mayor, you've lived down there, you know what I'm talking about, it's, it's much worse threat of storm down there. Thank you.
Okay, I think we've discussed this topic, we'll move on to the next one, unless any council has any further comments, I don't see any. Under B2 discussions, we have mobile food dispensing and mobile food vendors, Mr. City Manager.
So, Mr. Mayor, this is another policy issue that, I think this is our third COW discussion, and to be quite honest with you, I don't think we're there yet either, on this particular one. So we're going to basically follow the same process that we did with the last discussion, in that, recite back to you the changes that we've made in the drafting of the ordinance, based on the last workshop that we had, but understanding that we, we still have issues to work through. And so we're going to, once again, continue to ask for your input on the proposed language in order, in order for us to move forward and be consistent with, certainly with state law, that, that kind of ties your hands to a certain extent on how you regulate these types of mobile vendors. And so I'm going to ask, I believe, Bob Peterson and Vince Cetero to come up to the podium and walk you through this latest version, but again, for members here in the audience, this is a work session, this is not a vote on an ordinance, this is designed for us to engage the council in conversation before we bring something back for a vote, if in fact, we bring something for a vote. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
I have a question before you start. In this presentation, there is a display of a project that's in here. Is this a proposed, I want to know why it's in there, I guess, I have a problem with it being in there.
So, Councilmember, that's designed for illustrative purposes only? I don't think we identify the, the location?
Well, it's pretty obvious where the location is. I'm just, I'm, I'm just disappointed that it's in the staff presentation, so...
Again, it's just an example.
Mr. Peterson.
Good morning, Mr. Mayor, Councilmembers. Robert Peterson for the Development Services Department. Ready for the slideshow? A little bit of background, and I apologize, there's a lot of background to this subject, because city's been wrestling with this topic for a decade now, or close to a decade, and I'll go through a little bit of that as we move forward. Our current code is not addressed mobile food vendors, prior attempts were not successful. We make sure they get a business tax receipt, but none of them have a certificate of zoning compliance, which means none are grandfathered for any location in the city or with compliance with any regulations that this council may adopt for this type of business. In 2020, the House Bill 1193 was approved, which the city manager referred to, and this is the bill that preempts most local regulation of mobile food courts, or of mobile food dispensing vehicles, and we cannot ban them in the entirety, but we can have reasonable zoning regulations for them. Let me do it this way. Draft regulations have been developed and discussed at two prior COW meetings, presented to the CRA two or three times, if I recall correctly, and the last version was, had a public hearing in P&amp;Z and recommended approval to council that was late last year. Since that time, January of '22, revisions were made to clarify the definitions, the standards for each type of vendor, and the regulations for food truck courts. And following direction from council, we hope to have a new public hearing and recommendation to the Planning Commission. And of course, any ordinance would come back to council for final adoption. We follow the statute, we have the details there, where the regulations would be found, their conditional uses in all districts. The definitions, the mobile food dispensing vehicle up at the top, that's direct from the statute. We also have crafted a new definition for mobile food vendors. These are the ones that will not meet, or do not currently meet the state definition, and are therefore exempt from any permit-type requirements. And actually, most of the food vendors in our community fall in this category. We have some picture examples, but almost, nearly almost all of them are a mobile food vendor, they would need to do some other things to be a mobile food dispensing vehicle. And a mobile food court, which we were asked to look at regulations for that, and that is a concept where you have multiple vendors on a site, operated on a single site at any time. And typically, those are more of a permanent installation. So here's an example of a mobile food dispensing vehicle that fully meets the state definition, it's fully contained. These vehicles typically don't stay long at one site, because they're truly mobile, they'll go to special events, they'll, they've been here at City Hall on occasion, they'll be at other locations when there's an opportunity to do business at those locations. Mobile food vendors, as I said, is what we have most of. As you can see by these examples, they're about a half step away from being a permanent business at these locations, with tents and tarps and seating and picket fences and potted plants, and go back to one, and one in particular, on the left-hand picture, you can even see one of the issues we have with these, you can see the garden hose, which is draining the water into the ditch along the side of the road, and that is... And, and that is, some people will talk about more later. So a number of examples, some, like the one on the left, haven't moved in years. I've lived in this community almost six years, and there's a couple I drive by every day, and I don't believe they've moved an inch in, in six years. I'm sure there's others like that as well. So when are they mobile and when are they not mobile if they, if they never move? The one on the right there is, it clearly comes at different locations and is a different matter. We included this slide, Councilmembers and Ms. Tate, as an example of a mobile food court that was actually submitted to the city, and it had been through a pre-op, and this was the first one we'd seen, and we had this example to show you the idea of what a concept of a mobile food court would look like, which is a permanent type installation. Prior discussions have focused on several issues. One of the big ones is how frequently they should move. If they're going to be a mobile food vendor, should they be required to move with some degree of frequency and how often? That was a point of debate, a major point of debate back in 2015 when the city tackled this ordinance, I'm told. And at that point, it was proposed they had to move every day, and that was not very well-received, I'm told, back at that time, or hasn't been since. I can tell you, as I read the recent Le County Code that they adopted, it appears as they require them to move every single day. And the, create the process and regulations for the food truck courts, which we have done. And the other issue that's been a lot of debate is parking in city parking lots. There's two issues here about this, and it also goes with the one, two bullets down, the parking and vending from on-street parking spaces. When we talk about this, we divide this subject into parking, it's just parked there, or whether they open up the windows and doors and start doing business in those locations. So there's been discussion and issues about parking in city-owned parking lots is more or less a permanent location where they park them, or they park them for some period of time, and then should they be allowed to do business in those occasions? The hours of operation in the city-owned parking lots has been discussed before, and this is largely in the context of the South Cape. And then parking or vending from on-street parking spaces and develop regulations for food halls. With respect to the latter, we've looked at some other communities, and food halls are the same as a restaurant. You have a kitchen operation, people rent spaces and, and they try out a business, try out a food concept, and those are generally regulated exactly the same as a restaurant in, in other locations, and that's how we propose it would be done in Cape Coral. Went over the definitions we've added. The regulations exempt, of course, it's important to reiterate this each time we talk about this. Private events for durations of less than a day, a birthday party, graduation party, a business opening, those types of things, any sort of private event would be exempt on a, for a one-day basis. And special events that are administered by our Parks and Recreation Department are also exempt from the terms of this ordinance as they currently are, that we have food trucks at those events regularly and during a declared state of emergency. This is the process that the mobile food vendor would go through. Top, you have the different classifications, and on the left, you have the columns of the, the items. So as you'll see across the top, the only thing we can require a mo- mobile food dispensing vehicle to do is get a business tax receipt. We can't require licenses, permits, or anything like that. That's exempt from statutes. The mobile food vendor, the, the majority of what we have in our community, because they're evidence seem, looking more permanent, they don't meet the state definition, they're not fully self-contained, often they're connecting to external sources of water, power, or waste disposal of a fashion. We feel those should be approved with a limited site plan in addition to getting the BTR, so we know how they're connecting and safely connecting to water, waste disposal, and power, both under the building health side of the world and the fire codes, especially for the connections to power. Then a mobile food court would be a permanent site installation, and that would get your normal site plan and, site development plan and business tax receipt. We would require notarized permission from the property owner to have at the truck at all times. They can't be parked anywhere, they would impede traffic. They need to be compliant with the safety codes, building, fire. And with respect to utility connections, mobile food vendors, that would be NA or prohibited as they are fully self-contained. Mobile food vendor, you could connect, but you'd have to show how that's done in the site plan and get the appropriate permits, your electrical permit, your plumbing pit permit, or the type of thing that shows your meeting of codes if you're going to connect to external sources of utilities. And then on the mobile food court would be required to have those permanent connections for water and wastewater, the power and, and those things they could pull up and plug in, and, and they're good to go. We have standard that they have to be parked on and over an impervious surface for cleanliness, they don't get mud and, and just sort of a free-for-all location. That's common in other codes. They have to have some method of trash disposal. We've left this to the, there's been comments about this before, we've left that largely to the arrangement of the vendor and the property owner. If it's a mobile food dispensing vehicle, they're going to move every day, they would probably have a trash can for the customers. The mobile food vendors that are looking a little more permanent, they would probably need to have more than that, but that we would leave that arrangement to be a private sector determination, at least how the ordinance is drafted. Seating areas are prohibited unless you're a mobile food court. That's common in other codes that you, you don't have chairs, picnic tables, tents, tarps, and all sorts of covers showing up, many of them on, not on impervious surfaces. Tents and canopies would be prohibited. Anything on the mobile food court would be done on the mobile, on the site plan. Now, that does not prevent them from having, to clarify here, many of the trucks have like a fold-out awning or window to protect for shade for the customers or queuing to get their order or place their order. And it would be okay if there's a tarp fastened to the dispensing vehicle itself, but not freestanding tents and tarps for seating areas like you saw in a couple of those slides. Frequency of movement is the big, still to be determined. We're looking for direction on this subject, frankly. We, we've heard comments back and forth on all sides of this issue. You know, the mobile food vendors tend to be, they move every day, the true mobile food dispensing vehicles, they're fully self-contained. The ones that are beginning to appear more like a permanent business, we would recommend that we should develop some standards for those to be periodically moved for maintenance, for cleaning, and so they don't in fact become a de facto restaurant, as some of the opponents have suggested, competing with brick-and-mortar restaurants and not having grease traps or, you know, all of the things that a, a brick-and-mortar restaurant is required to do. Some of the brick-and-mortar restaurants don't view that as very fair competition. And then on city property, would require city permission, of course, and we would have it drafted, it would be further permission to park overnight in the city parking lots. The, we can come back to each of those as we, as I finish this presentation. All existing food vendors would need to obtain a certificate of occupancy, as I hinted earlier. Many might need to change how they operate, set up, they locate, and that might be difficult for some of the vendors because they've become accustomed to how they're operating currently. So here we are on the remaining policy decisions. How frequently should we require them to be moved? We did not actually put a frequency in the code, we're looking for direction on this to how many days in a row they could be on a site without being moved, or how often they would have to be moved, whatever that frequency may be. And that's, I don't know, want to take these one by one and talk about them, or do you want to bring them all up later?
I would say we go down the list and talk about each one of them individually and, and let council weigh in from there, and then go to the next discussion.
Okay. You want to do that at the end here?
Yes.
So then, how many mobile food dispensing vehicles or mobile food vendors should be allowed on an individual site at any one time? The code is drafted, does say one. That drafted was thinking more of a lot of the smaller sites where you see them, where really they're in like the parking lot of that gas station you saw on one or other places where one would seem to be the most you would want on that site. Now, there are larger properties where certainly could accommodate more. So that's, again, that's a policy choice. How many would you want to allow on a site at one time? Overnight parking on city property or city parking lots? Should that be allowed? This is the parking of them rather than the vending from them or doing business out of them. As we've talked before, we do prohibit commercial trailers from being parked in the parking lots downtown. That was an issue about three years ago, if I'm recalling correctly that timeframe. And so that was limited. Other commercial vehicles do park in our downtown parking lots. The reason this is a particular issue, one of the commenters on Club Square brings this issue up because he would like to have his vehicle, mobile food dispensing trailer there all the time and either even vend out of it or use it as a kitchen for his building and his brick-and-mortar building. And then at what point on that parking should they move after they shut down vending for the night if they're set up in a parking lot? And what timeframe would that be? We've heard recommendations as late as 4:00 AM to coincide with the late bar closing, and if someone wants to stay open that late to provide an opportunity for folks to get something to eat after all the entertainment venues close, should there be a time limit on their hours of operation? It can be whatever you want. It doesn't, we're just looking for direction, we can draft it however the council would like that. And then should they allow sales while they're parked in an on-street parking space? Certainly, they can park in an on-street parking space, just like any other vehicle that's licensed on the roadway, but should they be allowed to sell from there? That's handled different ways by different communities. There's been concerns expressed, well, that creates conflicts with pedestrians or people possibly stepping into the street, or are they then going to park, which is fine, but then start vending right in front of someone else's restaurant or in close proximity to a fire hydrant or other things on, on your street furniture? So that's clearly a policy choice. Some communities allow it, some don't. So that could go either way. We do recommend that we move forward with an ordinance to, to establish some clear regulations for this industry. It's kind of been a free-for-all for the last 10 years, and at one point, the direction was to just make sure they get a BTR, and we'll take up these regulations later, which has been the impetus of this effort over the last few years. And if, we will prepare a final version, given council's directions, and take that back to planning and zoning for a new public hearing and recommendation to you all. Thank you.
Could you go back to the slide on the very first photograph?
These?
Yeah. Thank you. Vince Cetero, Development Services Director with your indulgence. Wanted to talk about a couple of issues just to supplement what Bob said before we get into your discussion. As you can see, we broke this into three categories. I, I think we streamlined it as much as we possibly could based on the product that you, you see or the product that wants to come in with the mobile food courts. So you have the dispensing vehicle, which is the truck, which was in the previous photographs. Then you have the one in the middle, the vendors, and then you have the food court, which yet to be developed, which other communities are developing and ordinances for, and they already have them established. This one is where it gets a little tricky, because as you can see, these are set up almost to be a replacement for a brick-and-mortar. So when you talk in, in your discussions about policy, Bob put on the chart, which we'll go over in a minute, two key issues. One is, well, can they stay there? Do they have to move? And how do they get approval? So, and here's two more examples. One of these, I believe, is on Del Prado, that might be the same one, at the gas station. That facility, that structure, if you will, where the food is prepared and sold, most likely can be moved. It has wheels. Some cases, they don't have a wheel, they, well, they'll take them off and they'll put it down. So those are some of the things that you have to discuss in policy. And the question is whether you want to see that removed or not, and how often? Because that vendor has made arrangements with that gas station owner to place that facility on the property, and it's really become an outdoor restaurant. So what we're saying is, you can't have tables, chairs, the fence, the, the canopies. In this case, you got umbrellas. The ordinance as drafted, and this is where I, I would like to see a discussion, or I, I recommend you have a discussion. If you're going to allow that with some type of approval, and we're recommending that there has to be at least some kind of a limited site plan approval, do you want those types of ancillary uses to be present? Do you want to have people have the ability to have the umbrellas, the little picket fence, plantings, and seats? Because the way the ordinance is written, and we had to go somewhere with the, the draft, the answer is no. And if you want it, we, we'd have to change the ordinance, and then they would have to put that in the site plan. And then the other question is the frequency of how often they move them. Here's some more examples. The food court is different, they're going through a, a site plan. Some people might even go through a rezoning, a planning unit development, so then there, there could be a number of conditions attached. So one more issue I just want to talk about, and that Bob just talked about, and it dealt with, was an item on the chart. Bear with me. Yeah. Okay, look at the bottom two specifically. Frequency of movement to be determined for both the dispensing vehicles and the vendor. The one that's more difficult to, to tackle here is the vendor, because I haven't seen one of those move in, in a very long time. And the inventory that we did in 2013, my staff did, was about 24, 25 vendors. That number's probably a little bit lower now, especially with COVID, but it's probably between 15 and 20. And then the last one on city property with city permission on, on the, on the dispensing vehicle, which is the truck, and the most common one you're going to get on that is a special event, in a park or a, on-street bike night or something like that. The one in the middle with city permission and permission to park overnight would certainly be something you want to take into account. That's going to get tricky as well, because what if somebody wants to come in and plop one of those items down that we just saw in Del Prado in Club Square? Is it going to be permanent? Is it going to be temporary? What are the requirements going to be and so forth? My recommendation would be to you, when you deliberate, if you're going to entertain that, the vendor, think of the vendor as the semi-permanent restaurant with, without brick and mortar, that you limit it on city property, that it's for a duration of time. It's not, it's treated like a special event, if you will. It's not permanent. That's just my recommendation to you, you, of course, would deliberate. But that's where it's going to get tricky, in the middle, because most of the vendors that we're coming across right now, or the business owners, I should say, so I don't mix terminology, are in that category. When we first started doing this research, well, actually, the staff did it before I came here, as Bob stated. This ordinance, I think, was started in '12, and then I came in October '13. And right after I came, there was an ordinance amendment on the, the docket, and it, it had a number of stops and starts, and here we are in 2022. The dispensing vehicle or the truck was something we did quite a bit of research on, and one year, I don't know, about four or five years ago or so, I went to the National Planning Conference, and there were a number of students that offered, in one of the sessions, they actually had poster boards set up for their master's thesis in planning. And one from Kansas I met, young lady who I spent a great deal of time talking to about her research on mobile food courts and also the dispensing vehicle or the truck. And she had researched the number of ordinances and actually crafted a model ordinance as, as her master's thesis, and came up with numerous examples. And one of the ones that we looked at pretty closely was Miami Beach. As a matter of fact, that ordinance was actually highlighted in a movie several years ago called Chef, and you could see the, the owner of the, the truck is arguing with the code for us, one officer, because I think it's a 48-hour, you have to leave for 40 hours before you can come back as part of your permit, something like that. And I found it pretty amusing because of what we do for a living, but, so that's the kind of thing with the truck. You, if you limit it, it would be for durations of time. You, if you limit it, it would be for durations of time. You leave, you come back, not so much for the vendor because they're placing that new business on the property. One other policy consideration, and then I'll turn it over to you, Mr. Mayor, that came up. Mr. Hernandez reminded us this morning that we did not put on there. I apologize. Councilmember Shepherd brought up at the last meeting, solid waste disposal. That's something that we ask that you consider in your deliberation because it was brought up. We do have some equity concerns with that because we don't ask other businesses to provide contracts unless it's a special situation or it's part of a large rezone or planning unit development. Someone that goes into a business in a shopping center, for example, or a plaza, a new business back and forth, that's not part of the requirement for them to get a zoning certificate. We look at other things. We look at whether they're doing remodeling, whether the use is allowed by zoning and so forth, fire prevention code and so forth, building code. We don't look at that. So, it's a concern we have. But I just wanted to mention that to you before you deliberate. Thank you.
And Mr. Mayor, if I may, I have some comparisons for you because I know, I believe it might have been Councilmember Tate asked at a prior discussion of how we compare with the Lee County ordinance. I may have that wrong, but I know I was asked that question. The Lee County ordinance, we're talking about the frequency of movement, states, "Mobile food vendors must remove all vehicles, equipment and other accessory items from the permitted site when vending is not taking place." So, I would read that if they're not operating 24/7, they've got to move every day. The, with respect to the tents and tarps, I just checked these off here. Tents and tarps for the purposes of providing weather protection for patrons in the process of ordering from a conveyance may be provided. However, tents or tarps for the purposes of accommodating onsite dining for patrons are prohibited. All items must be dispensed from the conveyance. We don't use the exact same words, but the same intent, that you can have shade for the vending, but not for the dining and all of those things. And their code also states in a different section, "No mobile food vendor shall provide tables, chairs or other furniture or equipment intended to provide accommodations for the patrons of a mobile food vendor." And I think we use that similar language, but added shade structures, landscaping fences, because that's what we're seeing in some of them. And finally, the Lee County Code says, "Mobile food vendors must provide or have available a trash receptacle, which is clearly marked with a sign requesting its use by patrons." The mobile food vendor must remove all generated waste and trash at the end of each day or more frequently, if needed, to maintain the public health, safety and welfare. We had a little more simple statement that just said, "Mobile food, each of the type must provide a trash receptacle and keep areas of consumption free of litter." So, that's how we drafted it, but similar intent, just a different language.
Okay. Thank you, Madam City Attorney.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. When we're talking about city property, I want counsel, I want to remind counsel that that's a kind of complicated topic because we have different types of city property. So, I know that here at City Hall, where we do business, we have been having food trucks come and also at our property at the police department and also across the street at Public Works or whatever we call the old City Hall now. And the Annex. And so, in that way, we're more like other private property owners in the community or other large employers. For example, I know Lee Memorial and Cape Hospital have a food vendor that, one or more that comes at lunchtime. And so, in that way, we're more like, even though we're public property, we're more like a private property owner allowing someone to come and vend on their property. We also have uses like parks, where even though it's operated more like the City Hall in some ways, it's the kind of place where people come and engage in recreation and things like that. And you may have it some different idea as to, well, do we want to treat that in the same way as we would treat City Hall? Or are we more open to a larger presence for this kind of vending at a location where people come to spend long periods of time like parks? And then, last but certainly not least, is the fact that we have city parking lots where there's no, it's not a place of business in its own right, but it is a place where vehicles come and where there will obviously be interest in food trucks of one type or another coming and being able to locate. So, when, we have to remember this as we talk about what standards we want to have for city properties because we have different types of relationships with our properties. Just mentioning that.
Thank you. Councilmember Shepherd.
First of all, to me, mobile means mobile. So, that means moving every day. It's a mobile business. I believe that when we let it stay there for a long period of time, there's a lot of other things that we're missing out on, that we're not doing. For instance, when a brick and mortar business opens, if they're a restaurant, they have to have so many parking spaces according to how many tables they have in the restaurant. That's so that their business doesn't become a nuisance to their neighbors. They have to supply parking for the amount of people that they prepare to serve. Okay? Also, with building projects, there's site triangles. I've been dealing with them as a councilman an awful lot lately. So, now, when you have a parking lot of a business, there are site triangles to make sure that when their customers come and go from their parking lot, that they can see traffic signs, they can see cars going by, things of that nature. So, there is engineering that's done to make sure they don't build any objects or put any landscaping in the way of site that would create an accident. I've seen in these photos of all kinds of objects being put up in site triangles, creating hazards for our community. I believe that when they put tents and tables up, they're now acting as a brick and mortar. So, are they supplying parking? A lot of these places like gas stations don't have a lot of parking spots because their customers don't stay there. They're pulling in, they're getting gas, they're running in, they're grabbing something quick and they're leaving. They're not required to have a lot of parking spots. But now, when you add a food vendor that decides to put picnic tables out and he's acting as a brick and mortar, we are creating these nuisances and these problems that become safety problems. I believe the rules should be different if it's a site developed for food vendors that we've already talked about. But I believe that, you know, when it's a mobile, the answer is already there. It's mobile. I believe that all the objects that they bring should be connected to their mobile vehicle. Maybe a trash can would be the only thing that I would think would be fine to place around the object. But I think that we really should look at the site triangles when some of these vehicles are parking frequently and staying for long periods of time. They're creating hazards that are, that we check when we allow a brick and mortar to be built. And I guess that's it for now. Thank you.
Yeah, I just have a couple of questions for you, Bob. When you look at the, I guess it would be the state definition that you're trying to outline, where it says that a mobile food court is two or more vehicles? My concern is, you know, I think a mobile food court is more defined than just two vehicles on one particular location. You know, because what I'm, what I want to make sure is you don't get two or three food vendors get together and go to a specific site to operate. And under the definition that's shown here is...
I have them on the computer. Could we get those on there? Overhead, please. Thank you.
Yeah, mobile food court is two or more mobile food dispensing vehicles or mobile food vendors operating on a single site at one time. So, to me, a mobile food court is more defined than just that. You know, to me, it's a specific site that maybe went through some, possibly some permitting or at least some type of development plan to operate longer extended periods of time. You know, that's to me what a mobile food court is. Something similar to the proposed site plan for, that was submitted for consideration by a business owner here in the city. To me, that's more of a mobile food court than just two or more dispensing vehicles at one particular site. So, I think that we have to make sure we're crystal clear on more so what a mobile food court is here within our city. I kind of agree with Councilmember Shepherd. In my opinion, mobile is just that. Typically moves on a daily basis. I kind of like the verbiage that you outlined in Lee County regulation. I think being consistent within may be something that we want to take a look at. You know, as far as tables and that you see or umbrellas, fencing, things of that sort, I don't agree with that. To me, a mobile food vendor is just that. It's mobile. To me, that's a, that's a business that's not a brick and mortar business. You know, it's just like the one picture you showed on the gas station. Well, that, that you had a vendor at a gas station parking lot. Well, that gas station had to go through a development process. It had to get approval, had to get permitting in order to operate there with the land development code regulations that we have, whether it's on landscaping, parking or whatever it is. And just because the particular owner is probably renting out that space, to me, that's not what the intended purpose of that particular parcel was for. So, we either have to have some type of a process if we are going to allow that at any particular site on a, even on a semi-permanent basis, which in my definition would be more than daily, where they would move on a daily aspect. That may be something that we have to take a look at. But for me, mobile is just that. It moves every day throughout the city. They show up, they sell their product and then they move on at the end of the day. As far as city property, I think it should be the same, that those vendors move on a daily basis. I do know, when I was the District One Councilmember, we had a problem in our downtown area where we had businesses throughout the community that were using our city lots as storage lots, storage facilities. They were bringing their trucks and leaving them there overnight. I pay over $600 a month so my commercial vehicles can park legally in the city. What I want to make sure that we don't do is develop a policy where we're allowing these food vendors or any business of any sort to be utilizing our city property and our city lots as a storage facility. And the best way of doing that is they have to be moved on a daily basis. Now, you had mentioned that there are some commercial vehicles that are parked, say, either in Club Square, Big John's Parking Lot, Guanamia's overnight. And that is correct. But it's my understanding, and Madam City Attorney, please correct me if I'm wrong, that the only individuals that are allowed to do that are the businesses surrounding that particular establishment that are utilizing the parking element of that parking lot as a criteria for their businesses as far as parking spaces, this parking space criteria that those businesses need to meet. If they're not within that complex or that area, then they're not allowed to park there overnight. So, I just wanted to make that crystal clear with council. So, I think in summary, I kind of like the Lee County. I would like to maybe take a look at that. It would have been nice if we would have had that maybe prior so I could have reviewed it. But I'd like to take a look at that and go through it to see exactly what they mentioned. But what you did summarize, I kind of like. And I do like the consistency, whether, you know, it's Cape Coral or Lee County because you know as well as I do that these vendors will probably play the system. So, if we allow more than maybe Lee County, you know, they're going to be bouncing back and forth. So, have that type of consistency, to me, is more important. So, that's where I'm at for most of these topics. Does that give you the direction that you're looking for on the frequency of removal? Individual private property? One thing I think that we have to consider, and I'll give you an example. The vendors say at Home Depot. You know, that particular location, they don't move at all. They're there 24/7. I think they're connected to the water from Home Depot and are utilizing that. So, I think that's something that we'll have to try to address, those types of facilities. But they're very similar to the ones that may be in the, in the gas stations. We saw the one whose that you, that you showed in the one picture. You know, that's something that we're going to have to try to address because we do have some of those types of facilities throughout the city. I don't think it should be seating and umbrellas and things of that nature because in it, to me, it's more of a business than, than just something mobile. So, that's where I sit on it. Councilmember Tate.
Thank you. I agree, I have looked at the Lee County ordinance and I like it. I think that it is a mobile food vendor. It should move every day. I don't believe that mobile food vendors should be in our parking lots. And for instance, the one owner that we had some discussion about with Club Square, they can't come in the daytime, sit there all day, take up a parking space, which we know is so valuable in the downtown. So, if they're having a special event, that's a completely different section, I believe, than this. I don't believe that they should have tables and chairs, especially the ones you showed us with umbrellas and tents. A threat of storm, that would be a definite problem any day that it rains. Or, you know, there's strong winds, that's a hazard. And I don't know if their insurance covers that or the owner covers it. I believe that the people like the mayor mentioned, Home Depot and Lowe's, I believe they're part of their establishment and they're backed up against their store. So, it's completely different than sitting out in the corner of a gas station. So, I think that's the way you can determine those. On the ordinance itself, I had a couple of questions, the draft ordinance. Number three, it says, "Except as provided in section, only one multiple food vendor is permitted to operate in a single site." So, I assume that if they get a special event permit, they can obviously have what they want?
That's correct.
Okay, so, I'm good with that. And I'm very against the furniture and setting up a business. I believe that that competes with those people who are actually paying taxes, own a building or rent a building and run a business. So, I would like to see them there. Food courts, I guess when we have a food court or it comes before us, we can discuss it. But since we don't have one right now, the definition of a food court probably needs to be a little better than two.
Sure.
But for a business that gets a special event permit, they can have two, they can have three, they can have whatever they're going to have at a special event. So, as long as they move every day, which I think is critical to the mobile food vendor ordinance like Lee County has. So, I prefer to see it just a little bit stronger. But those are the things I want to see in our ordinance, is they move, they're mobile every day. They don't take up our parking spaces in city parking lots, which are so valuable. And that we can control the type of business. In other words, they're not running a business, they're running a mobile food court.
Yes, okay. Mr. Mayor, if I may, a couple of points there, Councilmember Tate, counsel. I would view the ones, the ones that like Lowe's and Home Depot, for example, those would be a mobile food vendor under our definition. They contract with the store and those locations, but they're often just plugged into a hose outlet and a power... But they're often just plugged into a hose outlet and a power cord. So they're really no different than the ones in the gas station parking lot. It's just that they're, they get them in there and they get them right on the building and they, you know, it's a little more defined how they set up. But they have chairs and tables. I've been to Home Depots myself, where they'll put up little tents and have picnic tables or under the awning that comes out from the building itself. So those would be the same as a mobile food vendor is the way the ordinance is structured.
I think we have to treat everybody equally. I think if we start picking and choosing who we can regulate and who we can't, we're going to have even a bigger problem.
I was, I, I agree, and that's why I just let you know, they're the same.
So to your point, I, I agree. But once we define it, then it should be the same for everyone. And I don't have a problem with these mobile food trucks. I think it's great, I've been to them myself. But you buy your food, you take it back and you either eat it in your car or you go back to your business, and that's the way it rolls. And so that's what I would like to see, much like what happens in Lee County.
Thank you, Councilmember Nelson.
Thank you, Mayor. So could you pull up, Bob, the slide where you said you still needed some policy decisions? The slide that had the items that we still need to discuss? I just want to make sure I'm addressing. There we go. Okay, so I know that, that a while ago in one of the original Cal meetings, I had said, you know, let's look at other municipalities' ordinances, you know, and see what they do. So, you know, a little bit more vibrant areas like in Portland or Austin, Texas, that have those kind of dynamic. They offer that as an additional amenity to their residents within their city. So I researched those, and in looking at them, there's two things that really stand out. Exactly what Councilmember Tate said, and I think the mayor said, you know, we have to treat everybody equally. And believe me, nobody loves that mobile food vendor at Home Depot more than my sweet mother, who is visiting now and was there yesterday. However, I do not think that if it's mobile, it has to be defined as readily movable at all times. So in other words, if the health department comes and for some reason they're not passing whatever the health department code is, they need to be able to shut down, pick up and go away, do their cleaning, do their maintenance, and be able to come back. I also think if, if we're talking about mobile, utilities and water do not, we do not need to be attaching permanent utilities to these, these mobile facilities. They are mobile. And they should not have chairs and tables and places for people to sit because they are mobile. They're not brick and mortar restaurants, totally different. We have to really be clear in our definition of, of what is mobile? What does mobile mean, movable at all times, 24 hours in the permitting process? If they need a special permit, because say there is a special event and they, they're going to stay overnight because it's a multiple day event, great, that's a separate issue. In terms of looking at a, a mobile food, food truck court, at that time, I think it's appropriate, you know, where they could, you know, have the hanging lights and have some picnic tables out there and have, you know, an established seating area because it's a food court. Maybe, as I mentioned in one of the first meetings, maybe we have a, you know, Thursday food truck night or something in Cape Coral. I mean, I, I don't know, that's down the road. But I think we need to be very clear on mobile. What is mobile? What does that mean? And it, and it, and we cannot cloud those two. So I would recommend that we do not allow them to attach to any permanent utilities. They have their potable water, their generator makes them mobile. Anybody comes in and says, say there's a storm, you need to shut down and get off-site, they're able to do that quickly, nothing overnight. You know, doesn't need to stay there overnight, can come back every single day because it is a mobile unit, that is what mobile means. I would also say, you know, that, that again, the tables and chairs should not be allowed at all. People can come up, get their food and leave. If it's a, if it's a food court situation, that's a different. If it's a special event, that's different. Let me see if there's anything else. Overnight parking, no. Vending wall parked on and on-street, no. If they're going to, they have to have a permit, a permit that specifically indicates what, what they're going to be able to do operationally. And I don't think on-street parking, parking space is a good idea. Again, it needs to be fair and consistent, and I don't agree with that based on the term, based on the definition of mobility. In terms of how many should be allowed on an individual private property, you know, that's something I don't know. I would have to say, you know, we'd need to determine the size of the property, you know, and, and follow whatever codes we have with the state and the county, you know, mirror what they're already doing. But overnight parking, no, I won't support it because it's mobile. Thank you, thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Councilmember Walsh.
Thank you, Mayor. I'm going to ask the city attorney first question, which doesn't necessarily have to deal with mobile food trucks. Can you explain to me the property owners around and near, let's say, Big John's and Club Square? I know that they are exempt from having to have parking spaces, but are they entitled to any of the parking spaces in the city parking lots?
They're not entitled, I think, in the way that you mean. So in other words, if I have a business there, I'm not entitled to five spaces or the three spaces right behind my business or anything like that. They, we have provisions which allow the parking spaces in those parking lots to be counted toward those businesses' minimum parking requirements.
Okay.
But that's not giving them any specific rights to specific spaces.
So what I want to say as far as the food ordinance, the way we're looking at it now, I think it'd be a lot easier for us to remove the city limitations from it. I think it'd be a lot quicker to get it passed and we actually get some, some things with this because I find it hard to say that I can park my electrical truck or I can park my box truck in a city parking lot. But if I want to park my food truck there, I can't. So I think we're excluding someone specifically from being able to use the city parking lots. So to keep this, as far as mobile food dispensing vehicles from being able to park overnight, I don't, I don't see that as something that we should. I think we need to do it overall, whether it be commercial vehicles aren't allowed to park overnight in city parking lots. Because to me, it's, it's the same difference, whether it's a plumbing truck or a, or a food truck. Now, I think we've already got, as far as operating in city facilities is by permission, which is I have on there. So if someone wants to set up a food truck, they would have to get permission from the city, which is what a food dispensing vehicle or a food vendor has to do anyways for a commercial business. You have to have a notarized letter saying that you're allowed to be there. So I think that that takes care of that as well. So I don't think parking needs to be a part of this. I do think that they need to be readily available to move at all times. So if this is a mobile food vendor, which is a trailer, it needs to be connected to a vehicle so that it can move if it needs to be, you know, and show the ability to move. On a daily basis would be fine, I'd be okay with that. I think it needs to be able to, you can't just park a trailer and leave it because say an ambulance or fire truck needs to get through, what are they going to do? They're going to just push your trailer over? No, you need to be able to move it, especially in a, in a public facility. As far as, like we say with the Home Depots, they concurrently do a site plan? Is that how it is? They would amend the site plan for that and it would be approved?
Mr. Mayor, Commissioner Walsh, yes, a business like that is done through a site plan approval or a PDP in the old days or a PUD approval. What I can tell you from my experience here and in other communities, I have never seen a Home Depot or a Lowe's site plan that showed all of the outdoor storage. It seems to grow all around those facilities or the food vendor.
Okay. Let me see what else I had here. If I have a business, is there a curtain code in place to where if I wanted to put tables and chairs up for my employees to go sit at and outside? Is that restricted?
We have, sir, we have two sections of our code that would deal with that, would be outdoor dining. We have permits for that. And there's also the dining within the pedestrian zone area, for example, down on 47th Terrace, where we have specific permits that restaurants have sought to add seating. And we, we did an ordinance for that and it came through Council for the rules for that. To add outdoor seating is a part of their indoor operation.
That, that could be something that would be done.
Other than that, I'm sorry, you can imagine there's several businesses on Del Prado, I won't name them, that have both indoor and outdoor seating, and that's part of their site plan approval.
Okay. So yeah, so I, I agree, we don't need to be setting up tents and then having an awning for weather capabilities and ability to be in shade while you're getting your food. I think a site plan could, could deal with that, which would be the mobile food vendor. There's been like so many different ones, sorry. Thought we were going to go one at a time, but it seems like we're doing all five. Vending wall parked in or on street parking space. I think that has to deal with, if it's, was kind of taken care of. If it doesn't go into traffic, you should be okay. So I wouldn't, I wouldn't worry about that. I think we're, like I said, I think we're going in the right direction with it. I would like to remove the city aspect of it so that we can actually get something done. So that's, that's kind of where my main thing is. Readily movable and let's remove the city because it seems to be like the city could be treated like a commercial business. So we just have to have a permission. Thank you.
Madam City Attorney, since Councilmember Walsh brought it up, my recollection, because I know I've had the police department, not me personally, but I know the police department had had a couple vehicles that were parking at the Big John's parking lot for an extended period of time, every night, had informed them that they weren't allowed to do that. My recollection that there was something, if those particular vehicles was part of the businesses in that area, give you an example, you have Tropical Furniture, you got Merritt Seafood, there's Ralph's Place, I think, had a vehicle that was parked in a parking space overnight for a period of time. Those vehicles are allowed. But if a gentleman, say, has a box truck that Councilmember Walsh had mentioned, they weren't allowed. So can you refresh my recollection on that? Because I do know the police department did go down, but I don't see anyone from the police department here. So could you refresh my recollection on that?
I, I know that we have restrictions regarding trailers parked in the, in the downtown parking lots. I don't think that we have special provisions for vehicles that are associated with businesses that have the right to use the, or that, that have the types of entitlements that we were talking about a few minutes ago. I know that has been discussed as to whether or not we would want to develop any programs for that. I think there have been some that had some trucks or other equipment out there that may not have even been a, a vehicle in that sense, that were discouraged from being there and that moved on from, I think it was Big John's at the time. But that is another issue that we, I know we, we talked about it perhaps the last time this came up, that what if I'm a restaurant, a brick and mortar restaurant that is located on one of our city parking lots? And maybe I have a food truck that may not be operating there at all? It just comes back at night to where my business is? Do you want to treat that the same way as you would treat that, maybe that same vehicle? If I also had it out there selling hot dogs or hamburgers or whatever during the day? Or if it was someone else's who does not have a business presence on the parking lot? If I'm selling my hot dogs there during the day, can I leave my vehicle there at night? But the guy whose vehicle just comes home at night is treated differently? Or how do you want to deal with that? As I said, it's really multifaceted in terms of how the city wants to approach it. The, the list is pretty, it's, it looks like there's only four questions, but I'm suggesting that those four questions have tentacles.
How about the onsite parking? Because if I remember correctly, there was an ordinance that was passed for business-type vehicles, say like a plumber, onsite, on-street parking.
We do have, we do have restrictions on commercial vehicle parking, I think, down in the South Cape.
Right.
Well, we have them in other areas as well where commercial vehicle parking overnight had become problems in the industrial park and I think some areas in the Southwest Cape and also in the South Cape. But there are some where you actually have to be doing work in order to have an exemption for your vehicle to be down there, and I think that's in the South Cape.
Exactly, and, and that was onsite parking, on-street parking, I'm sorry. Did that include the city lots as well? Because I, I want to say it did, but I'm not really sure.
John seems to be shaking his head no, but I don't know that we've really looked at that lately.
John, could you give me a copy of that ordinance so I can review that? Just to refresh my recollection. Councilmember Shepherd.
Yeah, I just want to repeat what Councilman Walsh said, that I think all the vending that are trailers should have a motor vehicle attached to them at all times because if they're mobile, they have to be mobile. So like the picture we saw with the gas station where it's a trailer? You know, that, that building was designed and, and it was vetted by the building department and the fire department for safety. And as it stands, you know, all the vehicles that are customers could leave immediately in an emergency. But that trailer would not be able to leave quickly in an emergency because it's not mobile. So I want, I want to emphasize that. Unless it's in a permitted special event, because then our fire department, what they do is they make plans for an event and they add additional safety. Thank you.
Councilmember Tate.
I agree, I think we can mirror the county on a lot of these. Did you mention the case of a, a Home Depot in the county? What do they do with their mobile food vendors? Do they have to apply for a specific variance or site plan to be able to stay there full-time?
Since, Councilmember, since about 2015 or so, when the last attempt at an ordinance failed, it was, there was a general agreement, and I'll just leave it described as that way, that we'll make sure these vendors get a business tax receipt, so the city's hole on the business tax, signed sales tax. But we will then develop the regulations. So no, none of them have a certificate of zoning compliance or in the old term, a certificate of use. If one did get one, it would have been issued in some air. But, so it was agreed that we would work on the regulations in the upcoming code update, which we did. And then that got pulled out so the code could move on. And then we've been wrestling with it since. And then there was the new legislation in 2020 that sort of further refined where our, our parameters were on that. If I, if I may, I wanted to mention one thing that we did meet with, had two meetings with various interested people on this. We had brick and restaurant, more, uh, brick and mortar restaurant owners there. We had a couple of mo- mobile food dispensing vehicle operators there. One who also, who happened, both also have known brick and mortar establishments. And we had some other interested people. We tried to get some of the actual vendors, of the mobile food vendors, and we were not successful in getting any of them to attend a meeting. And the industry representative said that would probably happen, and he was accurate.
There could be a way moving forward for at least those businesses that are entertaining having some sort of permanent mobile food vendor there that they could apply for some sort of zoning variance to allow that to happen, whether it's at a gas station, convenience store, Home Depot.
It certainly wouldn't be a variance, that's, that's a, has a very specific meaning in our code.
Or an exception or something that would allow them, as we move forward with this, but.
That would, the vehicle would be a site plan approval and then you'd have to wrestle with, if they're going to be semi-permanent, they got to provide parking. They have to have proper code-certified, you know, electrical connections that Mr. Rayborn would approve and so forth and so on, and waste disposal.
In terms of mobile, yes, they have to have the ability to move every 24 hours. Overnight parking on city property, you know, I, I wouldn't be in favor of that. How many mobile food vendors? See, initially when we started this discussion, the food courts, and I think the mobile food vendors were supposed to be two separate, two separate things. And I'll use Scotty's Beer Works as an example. On a Friday night, they may have three trucks that pull in there fairly regularly. that pull in there fairly regularly and then serve food that the patrons at the brewery eat, so. Then coming up with a number, two or three at a specific site that move immediately at the end of the day, but as far as the food courts, because the food courts traditionally, those particular food vendors would be staying onsite, correct?
That's correct.
Ten or twelve of them, using the rendering as an example, there would be a lot, they're not moving. Or, I know I saw food halls mentioned, which is typically just a covered area, right? Where are these food trucks?
A food hall would be in a building, so we're talking in a structure there, just like a restaurant. The food courts have some permanent hookups, so they could rent it to Hayden's Donut Truck for a month and maybe he said, "Okay, I'm gonna go on vacation and we'll bring in somebody else's barbecue truck," you know, but they're got hookups for all the utilities and for health and safety and fire code and building codes.
I just worry about it getting too confusing if we put food courts into the same area with food vendors and dispensing vehicles. It'd be my only concern, I think we're operating under two different premises here and it's gonna be difficult, but.
One way to look at it, the term is out there in the, in various places, you'll hear food truck rodeos or food truck roundups, those terms I've heard a number of times. And basically, as one of the other council people pointed out, you could do that with a special permit. So, if you're gonna have a gathering of food trucks at a location more than just the one, you could do that with a special.
Sure, yeah, which makes sense, and I mean, you see that every Friday at Batcock Ranch, they'll have their food truck Friday or whatever they call it. Vending while parked in and on-street parking space, no. That's a definite no for me, so. Does that answer everything on your list? I hope. Okay. All right, thanks.
Thank you. Mr. City Manager.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, I have a question for staff if I may, and I apologize if this was covered earlier. Mr. Peterson, I noticed in some communities, these mobile food vendors that you may find at some of the big box home improvement stores have actually moved their carts indoors?
Oh, I haven't seen that one.
In the store? Maybe not in this general area, but it does happen. So, how would this ordinance apply or not apply in those situations?
Sir, I believe it would not apply. If they've moved indoors, they're part of that, what's under that roof of that business.
Fire Marshal is shaking his head no.
Well, there might be fire code implications, but in terms of the zoning rules.
Yeah, if I will, if these temporary or mobile food vendors are moving theirs inside and are cooking with propane, propane is not allowed inside the building, so that's gonna be a major issue. We don't have any in the city right now that I know of that are cooking with, inside propane that is not a permanent structure.
You state your name for the record, please.
I'm sorry, Fire Marshal Rayborn.
Thank you. Councilmember Cosd.
Thank you, Mayor. So, before I start, when we talk about a limited site plan, we're talking about the property owner, right? Like that gas station, for example, would have to go and change their existing site plan or add to it to say this structure is going to be here, right?
That would be correct, ma'am.
And that would be for the, for the mobile food vendors, right? So, in that case, could they also, I think you might have said this before, but I want to clear it up, can they also have in their limited site plan tables and chairs for that food vendor? Can the property owner provide them?
Let me see if I have your thought correctly. If, I'm sensing there's some unanimity on the mobile food vendors moving every night, so if they, from a lot of the comments here.
I'm not on that boat.
So, there's a majority perhaps, rather than unanimity, pardon my term. So, if they're there for more than one night, if they're not moving every night, then they would need some sort of a site plan approval because then they're not being, no, no, if you accept that, then they're not being mobile.
Right.
So, they would have to get some sort of approval to be there if the decision is to move nightly. They would have to get some sort of site plan approval and detail where they're gonna be, how it's going to, how are they, if it doesn't meet the state definition that they're fully self-contained, how they're gonna connect and how they're gonna dispose of wastewater, what their water supply is, what their power supply is, and things like their propane tanks and et cetera. And then it would be, part of the regulations would be whether they, if they did that, could they have seating and all those other things? And I'm sensing somewhat of a majority here, there's not a big favor of all the seating chairs, tables, and all of those things. So, just for the mobile food vendors to be there more than one night, as we've been talking, would require a site plan.
So, it is possible for these businesses to stay in business if we move forward with this. I worry about, you said fifteen, twenty are operating right now, right, in the city? Is that what you said, or?
Well, as I think one of my slides pointed out, certainly, a number of them will have to make some changes, either to the stuff they have there, how they operate, the way it's all set up, and that might be difficult for some of them. One of the slides acknowledges that, that they don't have any, you know, non-conforming status or what's commonly called grandfather rights to those locations.
I'm just concerned, we've been allowing them to operate, basically turning, looking the other way for years and years now, and I have issues with damaging any business in the city, and they are also businesses, even though they're not brick and mortar. A lot of them are local residents and they employ residents, so. Anyway, I don't, I think every night for a mobile food vendor is excessive, so I wouldn't support that. I'd say more like seven days. I think every night for, well, yes, for the mobile food dispensing vehicle, that's fine. Can you please, I'm sorry, I know you just changed it, but can you put it back to the list of what you're looking for from us, the checklist?
I'm sorry, I didn't hear your question.
The list of what you're looking for? You had a list?
Well, I was looking for directions from the council on moving forward.
Right, could you put that list up on the screen?
Oh, I'm sorry.
I'll move closer to the mic, I'm sorry. Okay, and then as the next question goes, I think a lot of my colleagues already said this, if it's a food court, then the regulations apply there as far as how many should be on an individual private property? I think it matters how big the property is. I think it should be one per certain square feet, because if we just give a blanket number, what about tiny properties versus giant properties? No overnight parking in city property or parking lots, however, I think the hours that you suggested, two to six, I think those should be changed because we have some bars that are still open until three, right? So, I would say I wouldn't want to take away anybody who's doing business that late. Is that possible? Silence. Okay, and then I think there has to be an exception process for any, for city, for the city rules. I think there should be a process for exceptions. I think there's a permit allowed for overnight parking, right? We can give special permission for overnight parking in the city, on city property?
On city property? I'm not sure how that city property is regulated now for parking. I just know there's that prohibition in the parking lots downtown against the trailer parking, because I was, remember being here when that ordinance was passed by council. I'm not aware how they otherwise regulate parking in those lots.
Okay. I think I've answered all those questions. Do you have what you need from me? Okay, thank you.
Madam City Attorney?
I wanted to address for a moment the comment that Councilmember Cosd made when she said a number of these have been in business in the city for a number of years, and she is, I believe, recommending caution in terms of how we address them. So, whether or not they continue is an issue that, that's part of this, it's whether or not they continue. And then if they do continue, whether or not they continue in the manner in which they have been operating is yet another question, because it's possible that you will allow the mobile food vendor to be there, but not necessarily the expansion into an outdoor patio kind of actual dining out, al fresco out there would be allowed. Now, one of the questions that I thought I heard Councilmember Cosd say, which maybe I did not, was if I already have a brick and mortar building there, I already have a site plan, now, would I be the one amending my site plan or what kind of a site plan would we be talking about? And that would have to be something that would also be addressed because lawyers look at things this way. Is the brick and mortar building having an outdoor seating area where it just so happens that the people who are buying the hot dogs tend to go and sit? Or is it a seating area that is actually being located with the food vendor, the mobile food vendor? So, that would be another area there. You also have issues like if I'm a brick and mortar building and I have to have five parking spaces, as Councilmember Shepherd indicated earlier, can I use three of my parking spaces for outdoor food vending and then I only have two required spaces? And so, you know, those kinds of issues are all issues that are going to be dealt with and are part of this. You know, what is a food court? How many, how many vehicles, mobile food vendors can you have? And then you have a food court, which is presumably a more permanent thing. The only thing I'm going to recommend is that as you're thinking about these, set aside any issue about special events, because we have a separate special event ordinance and special event food vendors are totally set aside from this. So, that's something, that's a complication to be dealt with, with another ordinance when you revisit ultimately the special event ordinance. So, that was, that's one that I would recommend you just set aside because that's not what we're talking about here at all. Those are totally exempt. It's an interesting topic and it's an ordinance that could probably use some updating, but it's, it'll just complicate the thinking in terms of this. Because yes, as you've already indicated, if I have a carnival going on in Club Square and I have twenty food vendors out there for the weekend or however long the carnival lasts, then that would be something that the city would allow, but other than that, we are not dealing with the special events in this.
Thank you. Councilmember Long, would you like to weigh in on any of the discussion here?
Yeah, nothing that hasn't already been said. I think I would agree with the majority of you here with regards to kind of looking to Lee County's. I think in a large part, they do a lot of the things right. One thing that I did want to mention, I think the mayor touched on in the beginning, is the current limit to anything over one requiring an STP or a site development. I think there's several instances in our everyday that we see, even like a brewery, where there might be more than one food truck at an event. Just thought that that might be too cumbersome for them to be able to move for those sorts of things. So, yeah, I think Councilmember Cosd had referenced in some others that maybe we evaluate that based on the amount of space available for those in relation to the other available parking spaces and infrastructure, whatever regards to that, similar to how we do the other processes with regards to density for projects that are brought on board. Frequency of removal, pretty much what everyone else has said. The individuals, yeah, overnight parking, that's a no for me, and on-street parking space as well is a no. Thank you.
Councilmember Tate.
Yeah, I just wanted to say, most of the city parking lots are in downtown, and to the mayor's point, when you said like tropical furniture and those, that's different than a food vendor, because you were talking about hot dog sales. So, those are just business vans that are taking up a parking space that belong to the business. I believe that's what you were referring to, correct? And I don't know if we ever settled that or not, but there are several that take up a parking space, that's just the way it is. Some of them use them for advertising, you know, where you can't find their business, and so we have never dealt with that. And on the site plan thing, wouldn't they have to come in with actually a structure? I mean, we don't allow mobile site plans, we don't allow mobile businesses to be on a site plan.
This would be, if you would, in addition to the site plan for the property.
Yeah.
Presumably, these are on a property where there's a brick and mortar business and they should have a site plan, and that they would, we would need to file an amendment to that. We see those routinely when something's changing or moving around or developing or on a piece of property, and it would show where they're gonna, as I think all the things I stated before, where they're gonna be, if the frequency means they're gonna have to connect to utilities and we have, no, that's all proper.
I wouldn't support that. I think, again, we do the standalone, they come, they go, that's it. No tables and chairs.
Councilmember Walsh.
Thank you. I'm gonna jump back on the overnight parking and city property. I think what a lot of everyone here is thinking is that you're just gonna go park overnight, your food truck. I also say a food truck parking overnight is the same as a box truck parking overnight, so I think we need to split the parking aspect of it into a different ordinance, and we need to decide that if we want to allow commercial vehicles to park overnight in city parking lots. Now, if we want to rework this to overnight vending on city property or vending on city parking lots, I think that should be entertained in this ordinance, but not the parking aspect of the physical vehicle when it's not being utilized. So, I just want to make that clear. If we go through this with an ordinance, I want to remove the fact of just parking it, because there's no difference if I'm parking my box truck or I'm parking my food truck. I think we need to just focus in on the vending aspect with the city parking lots. Thank you.
Yeah, I agree with you. I think parking overnight vehicle doesn't really matter what it says on the side of the truck. Like I said, I'm not 100% sure yet. I think what we gotta be careful about is if we're gonna allow overnight parking on our city lots, myself included, I may be moving vehicles or there may be many businesses in this community that are gonna be parking their, because storage is at a premium here in the city of Cape Coral. Like I said, I pay over $600 a month to store my vehicles, so if it gets to be known that you're allowed to park vehicles on city property, I guarantee you, you're gonna have a problem. So, it's something that we need to take a look at, but that's a different topic of discussion, I believe, for another day. I think we've heard from all the council members, and I think when I ask Mr. City Manager, have you gotten a direction that you're looking for today?
I believe we have enough to move forward with the next draft, and it looks like we're going to have to have a fourth Cal discussion on this before it's ready for an induction.
Okay. All righty then, I think we'll take a break till 12 o'clock now, and so this meeting was adjourned until 12. And so this meeting was adjourned until 12. All right, we'll call the meeting back to Uter. The next topic of discussion is school bus allocation options. Mr. City Manager.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. At your last regular meeting, you authorized staff to move forward with leasing or financing a, the purchase of replacement buses for the city's charter school system. There was some discussion about taking into account some alternative fueled vehicles. And I mentioned that we were scheduling a Cal discussion on that. And the next item, and we're going to have A.J. Forbes come up to the podium and just walk you through a few of the types that are out there. We want to get the council's input on how you want to proceed because we are ready to move forward with soliciting, or soliciting, I'm sorry, for the purchase of our at least seven school buses immediately and then the remainder of the fleet over the next couple of years. So we want to walk you through this conversation and hopefully get a consensus on how you want to proceed. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Good, sir.
Good afternoon, I think, yes. A.J. Forbes Fleet Services. I'm here to talk about the propane, CNG, and electric and diesel. The pros and the cons, they all have their pros and their cons. So I did talk to a couple dealers about propane, compressed natural gas, electric buses and diesel, and some of the users within our southwest area about what they thought of them and their opinions and a couple of school districts. So as propane, it is a little bit cheaper than diesel. So that's the pros and the maintenance is a little bit cheaper to work on and environmental benefits and reduces noises. So it's very similar to CNG. They have storage tanks and infrastructure. And the tanks, the big concern about propane and CNG is that, oh, the tank's going to explode and that. But the tanks are relatively safe. But some of the disadvantages that we see for the buses is that the price is a lot more. And in Lee County, there's only two places that are close to us that fill propane and they're both at U-Haul in Fort Myers. So there's nothing in Cape Coral that I know of. And another disadvantage is the spark plugs for maintenance have to be changed out quite a bit. So it kind of brings up the price of the buses to service. And the main reason that we have a problem with propane is that it does a vapor lock. When it overheats, we're driving down the road, if it gets too hot, it vapor locks and it shuts down the vehicle. And pretty much safety gloves when wearing fueling is very cold, you can get burned from It goes, the same thing for CNG. They're very similar, but one is compressed and one's liquid. So instead of going over all of the same things, the cost for the buses is really expensive for CNG. The stations, to install a station is millions of dollars plus getting the permits. There's only one place that I know of that has CNG is in Fort Myers and it's Valstar. It's over by the freeway. And then we got electric. Electric is coming. It's just not there yet. We don't have the infrastructure. You can save a lot of fuel because it takes none. And the environmental benefits are really good. And there's some great federal grants out there coming. And it reduces noise and you can actually make money. Over the summers, you could plug it in and when it's charged up and the bus is not running, you can go back to the grid and earn some money, hopefully pay for some of the costs of infrastructure later on. Some of the disadvantages is that they're $340,000 just out the door and their range is only 120 miles. And that's not with running the AC and cameras and radios at this time. So I talked to them and they said it's about 70 miles, but technology's getting better. Another disadvantage is we don't have any mechanics training for working on electric vehicles at this time and then training the drivers how to operate them and plug them in and anything like that. So I like electric, I just don't think we're quite there yet. Diesel, cost benefit is, you know, there are a lot cheaper buses than CNG and propane. Engines are more, they have more torque, they've been around longer, they're reliable. I don't have to train mechanics or the drivers how to operate them or any extra equipment I have to buy. And they've proven, they got a stigma of back in 2006, all the diesel exhaust coming out, but they've improved that tremendously. Now it's gone down with diesel exhaust and the catalytic converters and the filters is reduced down to like 90%. They're saying that you can breathe it. Some of the cons, they do have higher maintenance because they've added all this extra equipment to reduce maintenance and the fuel costs are a little bit higher. But once you take in consideration the CNG, the miles for, I'm sorry, propane, you're only getting three miles per gallon. When in diesel, you're getting eight and nine. So by the time you do six miles, the cost is going to be the same as diesel, it's a So I did contact Lee Trans. In 2016, they went to propane and they said they are getting out of propane, they're getting rid of all their buses that are propane and going to unleaded. They're saying that they have a lot of vapor lock and they recommended that we stay with traditional fuel for now. I did talk to Fort Myers Waste Management Company and they run all their 27 trucks on CNG, but they have some issues with hard finding parts and they don't have a station. True Star, that's it, is the station that they use, which is about a mile or two down from where they're at. I did contact Hillsborough County and they have 90 propane buses and they were having warranty issues. Warranty is five years. They were having problems with some of their engines. And so it's a one company that does all the propane buses for them, so they have to sole source it. If they don't have parts, they're stuck. But they're big enough and have a bus company or school company that they have a lot of spares to recover for any major breaks. And they also specify that during the shortage of drivers, they decided that to refuel them every day, they would just go to diesel and do longer routes. So a lot of those were parked during this time of shortage. Pinellas County, they have 108 propane powered Penas- Penales County, they have 100 and pro- 108 propane powered school buses. They, the mechanics, the superintendent of the maintenance, said that they have some issues going out with fuel pumps on their propane, and then just a bunch of little air, minor air issues, sometimes with brakes and that of driving too hard, and that their mechanics prefer to work on the diesel buses than the propane. And they said either way, they could go with propane or diesel. They, they were happy with both. Polk County, they got six propane buses, and they pretty much say the same things, fuel pumps, brakes, electrical corrosion, and that their drivers complain, they don't want to drive them because they have to go and fill them up after they're do their route every day when diesel, they get to fill up every third day or... So they recommended going to diesel also. Collier County contacted them, they said they don't have any alternative fuel buses. They said they looked into it and it's not cost effective. And Lee County, they said they don't have any buses, and they just left with that. And then I got one no response. So as a, as my recommendation is stick with the near, uh, near zero emission diesel engines because we don't need training. Our mechanics already been working on the diesel buses, and they know them in and out. Price, charter school, well, is cheaper for the charter school to go with diesel than to do the infrastructure and the propane or CNG. And no additional training for their drivers, and there's no additional tools that we have to buy that we don't have at the city. Have any questions?
Thank you. Councilmember Shepherd.
So my, you know, when I look at everything, the best deal is electric. Because the way I see it is, with your diesel vehicles, I know with my diesel pickup truck, just an oil change is almost $500 with changing the filters, things like that. Also, the brakes are very expensive on a commercial vehicle. I'm sure the buses go through, how many sets of brakes would you say a bus goes through in a year with all the frequent stopping?
I'll have to get back to you. I'm gonna say it's probably about twice a year.
Twice a year for brakes, so we're probably, uh, we're probably $2,000 a year, or $4,000 a year actually, just for brakes on a bus. When I did research on the maintenance of our existing buses, I see some of our buses that are only four years old, we exceeded what we paid for the bus just in maintenance. So we've already exceeded over $200,000 for a vehicle that's not even four years old yet, and we paid over $200,000 because of the maintenance. With electric vehicles, there, there's little to no maintenance. There is no braking system, there is no oil changes, there's only a minimum amount of even moving parts, which I know Councilman Walsh probably has a little more information because he actually has a electric vehicle himself. Then when you look at, you know, we're a city that wants to design ourselves for the future, so we should be looking at investing in the future. And if that's the future, then we should take this chance to, to jump into the future. You know, it's only a few buses, but when you eliminate the maintenance costs, what I would like to see is, so other council members can see as well, is the existing bus, buses that we have and their maintenance cost history since they were purchased. So we actually know what each bus cost us per year to operate. So simply the sale price in the very beginning is, is a very small part, because if we buy the bus for $100,000, but in four or five years, the bus cost us $300,000, and we have fuel costs that hop up and down, well now, that's another reason why the electric is better. And the other thing is it eliminates maintenance and it frees up your men to work on other city vehicles. So now they're, now they're not overwhelmed with all the upkeep and maintenance to the school buses because there's very minimal maintenance to the electric vehicles. So I'd like to see a little more research or know what we already pay for the diesel. We have the, the erratic cost of the fuel. I would really be shocked if they get eight to nine miles to the gallon. I mean, I have two diesel pickup trucks, and they get 10 miles to the gallon, and that's a pickup truck. A big school bus with, with all them students in it and all that weight, I couldn't imagine it getting seven to eight miles a gallon. Most diesel, big trucks get about five miles to the gallon. So I would like to see better research when it comes to the fuel cost. But I think when you add the fuel cost with the maintenance and upkeep, I think the electric vehicles, when you look at the total lifespan of the vehicle, you break that down into cost per year. That's what I do with my own business with equipment. I don't so much when I buy a piece of equipment for my business, look at what it cost me today I bought it. I say, how many years am I gonna have this piece of equipment? What do I expect to get out of it? And I add up the cost, if I expect that piece of equipment to last five years, I total the five years of total cost from maintenance to fuel to everything, and then I find my true operational cost of that vehicle. That's what I don't see here in this analysis. I don't see true cost of the vehicle for the total length of the vehicle. And I know that we have a total length because if we're leasing, then we know how long we're gonna have that vehicle. So it should be easy to come up with the real total cost of owning and operating that vehicle. Electric vehicles are taking off. I think we need to not respond as a city late, that we're a growing city, we want to be a city of the, you know, that's set up for the future, and I, you know, I'm interested in at least dabbling in the future and showing that we're heading in the right direction, if it's the right direction. But I think we need a lot more information to know the true cost. I'm already, I'm accepting your, your knowledge on the propane, and I, I could, I can see that being an issue. But the electric, even this, the propane buses, they're not making us money in the summer. The electric vehicles are gonna make us money on the downtime, when the grid is overwhelmed with everybody having their air conditioning system on. So, you know, that's something I didn't even think of, but talk to anyone that has an electric vehicle, like our councilman in District Four, Five, who can tell you that there is no maintenance cost, and I can tell you that the maintenance costs on my diesel vehicles are extremely expensive, extremely expensive. Just filters alone are hundreds of dollars. And then you also have the, the systems for the exhaust, you know, to protect the environment. Them systems are eight to $10,000, they go bad frequently. We also, I've noticed with our diesel buses, we've been having transmission problems and transmission replacements, very, very costly, $10,000 to $20,000 to replace transmissions. So once again, the diesel vehicles, they're, they're, they're great and dependable, but the maintenance cost is extremely high, there's frequent parts that can break, where with an electric vehicle, there is no moving parts that can break. So, what there is, but very few, very minimal. So I would like a more detailed comparison from electric to diesel, to really know the true number of the, you know, we gotta pick a life expectancy. If it's, we're gonna buy a bus and we expect to get, you know, five years out of it, what's it gonna cost us for the five years? Total that number, now we know what the bus costs per year. I think that's the way you get the true cost, where upfront, it being a lot cheaper than the electric, it might seem like the bargain. And I can be wrong, but I would just like the comparison. Thank you.
Mr. City Manager.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, I have a question for staff. Mr. Forbes, if we were to move forward with this next, the, the seven vehicles that we need to buy for next year, and we did purchase electric vehicles, do we have the charging infrastructure?
No, sir.
And what's, can you help us understand what type of infrastructure is associated with charging buses versus perhaps if you had an electric vehicle, that's a personal vehicle?
Well, you would at least need a, a stage two charging system, and then you would have to go with infrastructure and get with the electric company, see if they can do a survey, if there's power, if they have to do any kind of upgrade. Actually, facilities, we're looking now, trying to move forward and look at infrastructure for the city and buying city vehicles like trucks.
So I think, Mr. Mayor, Councilmember to, Councilmember Shepherd's point, I, we're not opposed to electric vehicles, and in fact, we have something that addresses alternative fuel vehicles in our strategic plan. The concern that we have is we need to start moving forward now and ordering the buses for the upcoming school year, and I don't think, because we don't have the infrastructure in place, that this next purchase of seven buses, I don't think it's realistic that they're gonna be electric. But certainly, perhaps as we move on, because I think Mr. Mason, last time he was here talking to you about the financing options, you know, this is a multi-year fleet replacement plan. So I think that, you know, let us continue to look into what's needed in terms of the charging infrastructure and pursue that. The federal government is making a lot of money available, at least over $5 billion across the country to support low or no emission school bus fleets, to include insulation of charging technology. I just don't think we can pull it off for these seven upcoming vehicles, but we are more than happy to look into it and, you know, bring back to council, you know, a game plan and an idea of how much it'll cost to install the charging infrastructure.
Okay, for, I'll give you, for instance, number one, I like to be proactive instead of reactive. So to wait till there's, like we, you're already saying, there's already monies becoming available for the infrastructure. I'll give you my, my own situation. I have one of my sons just buy an electric vehicle, okay? He didn't have support for the best charging situation, okay? So he had to buy a charger that could be used in most outlets that we have in the city and at our yards. The charging just takes longer, okay? It would take all night, which would be fine for us for now. The advanced charging professional setup that we could get as we progress down the road just gives the ability for rapid charging. So the charging is, is fast. It's, it's in, it's in 20 minutes, it's not in eight hours, okay? So we wouldn't really have the infrastructure problem at first. But like I said, I'd rather be proactive building our city to what we know is coming than be reactive and miss out, okay? Because we're proactive and we do this, there might be more available monies to us because of what we already implemented. But for us to make that proper decision, I think we need to vet this, a little more information is needed so that we can make the right decision. I don't think we're really giving enough knowledge to make that proper decision.
Councilmember Cosn.
Thank you, Mayor. So if it's not gonna be possible to get electric buses this time around, then why, Mr. City Manager, are we being given this presentation? Because if there's no choice, then why are we being given this?
Um, because it was brought up at the last, last meeting, when we were discussing the financing options, and Councilmember Shepherd raised the issue of, you know, we need to look at alternatively fueled fleets, and since we, that's something that we were already looking at as part of our strategic plan, it was just that the timing was just perfect for us to bring this up at a COW, and especially since we're getting ready to issue a solicitation to buy the, buy the, the new buses.
This is more of a discussion, it's not a choice that we're making, because the choice is already made, is what you're saying?
No, you can make a choice. I mean, if you want to go ahead and buy electric vehicles, there are some drawbacks associated with that. I mean, we don't have the charging infrastructure. You have a fleet services facility that's older than I am. I don't know if that facility's gonna be able to handle seven more extension cords, you know, plugged into its electrical system to charge these school buses. And so that's why, since it was brought up at a council meeting, we, we wanted to get your input if this, if alternatively fueled buses is really the direction you want to head in. And, and again, we're not in any way suggesting that's not the right direction, we're just suggesting that for this next procurement of the seven vehicles that you approved the financing for, that they be the traditional diesel buses, until we're able to work out all of those other infrastructure needs that, that go along with those buses. Because they're not, yeah, and I don't mean to sound disrespectful, we're not talking about, you know, charging up a Tesla or Chevy Bolt. These are large buses with a lot of batteries, and so they're just gonna take a lot of, a lot of juice, electrical wattage, to, to get them charged up.
That makes sense, and, and I hear you about the fleet facility. I mean, we have to be able to have them in a place while they're charging, so I would have loved to at least get one out of the seven. Is that possible? Do you think we could handle one?
I think it's possible, yes.
Okay. Well, I think of Cape Coral as a forward-looking progressive city, and I think even just having one of them being electric sends a message.
I think we can handle one. Seven, I don't think we're ready for.
And it would have been helpful for this presentation to have the, obviously the price of the vehicle, but that's really irrelevant. It's more about the maintenance and the gas. For me, the gas is a really big thing. We don't know what gas is gonna cost in six years or seven, but if it's the same as it is now, I guarantee you, an electric is gonna be the better way to go. So I'm in the market too for an electric vehicle, and so I, I've been reading up all about it, making little charts to show, like, what's the best time? So, anyway, thank you.
I think, Councilmember, we would be more supportive with the, with baby steps, and, you know, we'd love to try out on a, on a pilot basis, the purchase of one vehicle, as opposed to really making the big plunge and buying seven at one time. I don't think we're ready for that yet.
Yeah, I will say, for me personally, I mean, if you take a look at seven vehicles, buses for electric vehicles, you know, we're about $2.4 million in that purchase. If we have seven vehicles, we're about seven, a little under $700,000 if they're diesel. Now, I do like the electric vehicle concept. I don't know if we are there yet in technology. One of the concerning factors that I had by the gentleman from our Fleet Services Department is those particular buses will only probably, out of one charge, get about 70 miles, if I heard you correctly.
So I went up to Largo and did a presentation of the school buses, and they said it, it gets 120 miles, but then if you run in the AC and you got your cameras and everything, they said about 70 miles.
So that's, that's concerning to me because I would guess, not that I'm an expert on bus routes, but I would assume that an average bus ride on a daily basis is probably in excess of 70 miles.
It depends which schools they're going and if they're doing morning and night.
That's concerning for me. I think that I would like to see us move forward in electric vehicles at some point. We don't have the infrastructure in place, we don't have the training for the manpower to work on the buses. So when you start looking at this certain time today, I don't think we're there yet. Is that something that I think that we need to be taking a look at? Maybe do a pilot program with some of our other vehicles, maybe some of our code trucks or, or things of that nature to, to do a pilot program? Get our, get our mechanics trained in electric vehicles first? You know, it's kind of like buying a car and you don't have a driver's license yet. You need to have the driver's license first. So, you know, I think we're not, we're not there yet. So for me, for those reasons, and not only the savings, we can almost get 3.5 diesel trucks to one electric bus. So if you look at all those variables today, I don't think we're there yet, so my choice would be the diesel. Councilmember Welsh.
Thank you, Mayor, and I love your analogy, buying the car before you have your license. I actually did purchase my first car before I had my license, so to be forward-thinking, that is something that I did, which is why I like what Councilmember Cosn said, I would be apt to give it a try with one bus. I know Councilmember Shepherd said he wants to go all in. Being that I have an electric vehicle, I know the challenges that they do. If you are running low on a charge, you're kind of stuck. So before... So before agreeing to the one, I'd like to see what routes we currently use and if it's feasible on 70 miles to do a full bus route in a day. You know, before we make that decision, look into which route we might be able to use as a pilot program. And, and charging a bus isn't going to take a long time. So I know I can plug my car into a 110 outlet, but it's going to take me 15 hours to go from zero to full in a 110 outlet. So I know I purchased a 220 outlet. I can get my car charged in about four to five hours, but that is only 150 miles. So I can imagine a bus being three times, four times what my vehicle is and, and needing more of the electricity. So I think the diesel is the best option. But I would like to at least entertain or look into further what potentially getting one bus and then comparing them amongst how the other performance is with the fleet we currently have. This way, in two or three years, when these leases are up or the other buses are done, we can maybe look, look into getting the infrastructure built. And I already know what we're getting into when we go to purchase the five or six electric ones. Thank you.
Mr. City Manager, I see your light. Was that on before?
No, that was on before.
Okay. Councilmember Nelson.
Thank you, Mayor. I, I really liked the presentation. I liked the pros and cons. I agree that perhaps we should look at just one electric bus. But before we do that, I would like to see information with a return on investment, to be able to show the ROI of, you know, one bus. So that, to Councilmember Shepherd's point, going all in, we can, we can do this in baby steps, but be able to show him in the future and all of us what it would look like if we did go all in. And then we would have that data, right, for a short amount of time that we could look at, maybe analyze it for a year or six months and be able to show that return on investment. I think that'd be helpful.
Can I just address that point? Because it is, this is how we manage the city's overall fleet, is total cost to ownership. And we have a system faster that assigns points for maintenance, age, fuel consumption, liquid, any type of consumption. And so when we get to a certain threshold, that vehicle gets kicked out of the system. We, we do that, the buses are in that system. However, the city's fleet did not always maintain these buses. So we only have data back, I think it's till 2018.
Yeah, I know.
So it's going to be hard for us to give you the, the exact total cost to ownership for these. But what we could do in the comparative analysis is give you what we have. And then, but then go, you know, use some national average for a diesel bus. You know, there's studies published out there. But for these ones specific, unless we can find those records and then populate them into the system.
No, that, that'll be difficult to do. I mean, I, I remember this.
But we do have, we do have the records for, for recent years.
No, and I think that's good. I was really just specifically talking about the electric bus. Like, what, what is our investment on that versus how long is it going to take to recoup the investment? Just on that one bus? I mean, you know, Mike, to your point, it will be difficult to find those records because there, there really wasn't a lot of good record keeping back then. So, and I, and I went through this when we went through the fleet process when I was on the governing board. So I would say if we could do a return on investment for one bus, and then later on, we'll be able to show them for seven buses and what it looks like. And, and if we could do that return on investment, I, I would love to see us get at least one electric bus to maybe, you know, look at navigating that in the future. I mean, obviously, you know, the rest of them, I feel, as the mayor said and the city manager said, you know, we're not ready for entire fleet yet because we don't, we don't know. We don't understand it. We don't have the infrastructure. But if we knew the cost of building the infrastructure for one of those buses, you know, and then eventually, maybe we, we don't need as much infrastructure for the other six buses down the road. But I would like to see a return on investment for one bus, at least to start the electric and then do the rest diesel for now until we have that infrastructure in place and understand the cost and how quickly we can recoup the cost. Is that good? Are you good with that? Can we do that? Yes?
When, when we put that return on investment together, one thing that is going to, that will have the ability to skew that analysis is the upfront initial
Correct.
electric infrastructure. So if you're, if you're spreading that over seven buses, then it's one seventh.
Cheaper, absolutely.
So if, if you want to just look at O and M, operations and maintenance, you know, the cost of the electricity versus the cost of the fuel, the cost of the brakes versus not the brake, we can do that. But I think it would be unfair to put the total cost of the charging station and, and any electrical aspects on, on one bus.
Yeah, but I still think it's important for us to know.
Well, we can do that. I just, I just want to let you know, you might get a skewed result.
I completely understand. I mean, I looked at, when I worked for Goodwill, I looked at purchasing electronic buses. And I worked with the Miami Goodwill and realized that the return on investment would far outweigh the age of the, of the trucks. So we didn't go that route here in Southwest Florida. So I get that. But I think it would be helpful to know what that upfront cost is so that as if, later if, we decide to add more buses, we know what we already have in place. So then it would just be a faster return.
And, and I don't want to alarm anybody, but so, you know, when we put in this electric infrastructure, we're not just going to be able to put it at the charter schools where the buses are housed. Because, for example, a bus is at the, it's 55th mile and needs service. It's got to go to fleet.
So we need to, right?
We need a charging station at fleet to make sure it could get back to the school.
Well, let's look at that before we make the decision then on purchasing one of the buses. Because maybe that, maybe, maybe we aren't ready. Maybe there's a different way we can analyze it. But it certainly would be good, I think, to just look at, you know, look at the data.
And that's why I was suggesting if we're, you know, we're doing this right now with the city's fleet. So we've, we've, as you know, they have GPSs. So we've captured a GPS point at midnight for every city vehicle that we own, identified the largest congregation areas where they're parked. And we've looked through our entire fleet analysis for which one of those in the next three years are going to be good EV replacements. So if a F-150 or Taurus is scheduled to be replaced in three years or five years, oh, that could come out for an EV. So we started to identify where those locations that house the most EV eligible vehicles are. And now we're working through, as AJ said, with, with facilities to look at the infrastructure. Do we need three-phase powered? Is there enough infrastructure from the electric company? Starting, you know, how many base stations do we need? So we're, we're familiar with that exercise. I just wanted to, you know, we'll provide that. I just didn't want you to think we're trying to sabotage the, the answer because this cost of infrastructure.
No, no, I don't think that at all. I mean, I just think it's, it's, it makes sense. I mean, I, I get it. And especially if we're looking at that within our own fleet, there may be some cost savings there should we, down the road, decide to go to all electronic buses. I just think having that return on investment is going to be very beneficial for all of us and especially to pilot out if we can get one bus. And then if we decide to go all in, then we have the data. Thank you. Thank you, Mayor.
Mr. City Manager, a quick question for you. If I recall correctly, we identified, what, about 12 buses that we're going to have to replace here in the next few years? Is that correct?
Yeah, I remember, I think it was seven followed by six.
And when will you be purchasing the six vehicles?
Mark?
Mark knows.
The plan was the following year.
The second set of buses. The upcoming year was seven, and then how about the following?
Yeah, we'd actually be doing it probably in about five, six months. But we're also going to be looking at the federal grant program for electric and probably applying for, you know, just exactly that. And, you know, don't know whether we're going to get it or not. But, you know, the sooner we get into the programming for it, the better off we'll be. But that's our goal. And, but it's, at this point, we were looking to order the buses, assuming you approve the, the financing next week, we would order the buses immediately right thereafter and then turn around and do another tranche of this, probably in about five months.
Yeah, because the reason that I asked that question, and I'm guessing you're trying to get these seven buses up and running by the end of August when school starts back up. Is that correct?
It's going to take at least nine months.
I'm sorry?
It's going to take us nine months to get the buses. It's a building process.
Yeah. So my recommendation on the electric vehicles would be for the second set. That gives us time to do our due diligence, see what it's going to cost, how much infrastructure we're going to need, and then make that decision. So that would be, since we're going to be ordering buses five to six months from now again, that gives us a little bit of latitude to get the necessary information so we can make a good informed decision. But that's, that's my recommendation. Councilmember Tate?
Well, a lot of what I was going to say, the maintenance, it was privatized, so we don't have those records. So it's completely different now that the city is in it. If we do one electric one, then you've got to add charter school money in for the electric charging station. We haven't budgeted that and we're not going to be able to budget that. We're on a tight budget anyway. So while everybody's thinking one bus would be great, think about the cost to the charter schools right now because it's this coming school year that we need them. Now, it's going to take nine months. So imagine an electric bus. How much longer is that going to take? I mean, we have a need today for buses. So I, I want to be forward-thinking too, and I want this city to have the best vehicles that we can have. But I know what we voted on was 2.5 million, so, or we're going to vote on. So do we have the ability right now, or could we just wait, like the mayor said, in the next round and get the electric vehicle started? Hopefully, we have a grant for that. I know taxpayers just got a grant for, got a $7,000 credit for it if you ordered one. So if we, as a taxpayer, did, I'm assuming the cities and the counties will have the same ability. So I hope that everyone understands the needs are great. The money is tight in charter schools. So any additional burden you put on them is not going to go well. Now, I know that you're saying that we're going to save all this money on maintenance, but remember, it's not right now. It's what's coming up. So we got to plan for the future. I support the diesel for now and then look into the electric one. We can all move towards electric. My nephew has one. It's very costly at home. I mean, you got to, he has a 220 in his house and it, it wasn't cheap to put in. And he can only go so many miles. If we're going on a school field trip and we've already done the bus route for the day and we're going to go on a school bus trip, then maybe we can't take that vehicle because we don't have the mileage and it hasn't been charged. So there's a lot to think about for now, just to even say, let's order one and try it. I say, let's order what we had discussed, the diesel, and then move into it once we know more about it and we're more prepared as a city to handle the electric charging. Thank you.
Councilmember Long?
Yeah, I would agree. I think this is a little bit hurried for me with regards to the first purchase of the seven. I would also agree to move forward with the purchase of the diesel and then, you know, continue to have these discussions about the viability of, of the electric. You know, I too think that, you know, like to consider us as progressive, but not to the extent where it might come to our detriment. I don't think that the technology's there. The 70 miles figure was concerning to me especially. But again, something I'd be willing to look into. But really, for me, it's as simple as the fact that I, I view this in particular as sort of a means to an end with regards to the buses. We're not in that, that industry. And the fact that Lee Tran, who is very much in the transportation industry, if the information that was provided is correct, has zero interest, at least based on that and moving forward or switching to electric, and has made the recommendation to go forward with, I believe, just traditional gas vehicles. That's enough for me. I mean, I think that they would, would have looked into that much more than, than we would based on the scale alone. So, I mean, I'm willing to discuss it, but I think for now, this, because of the timeline, to move forward with the seven diesels.
Councilmember Hay.
Yeah, I'm good with the diesels at this point. In the last 20 minutes, I've been researching diesel versus electric, electric buses. And actually, the maintenance cost for an electric school bus is 55 cents a mile, while in diesel, it's a dollar fifty-three, based on a study that the Chicago School District did. The other thing that people made a point of is the cost of the battery. Conditions vary on how long a battery is going to last. They say, you know, it could be six to 10 years for a school bus. But in the Florida heat, a school bus battery actually costs about half as much as the bus. So to replace batteries with lithium ion until technology catches up, and I think we're going to see a time where lithium ion is, is replaced by batteries that a company like Ceti is designing, which could, could also bring down the cost. They're not really showing a cost parity with diesel and electric until the year 2026 in term, in terms of the cost. So I don't think we're, we're going to get there. I, I think we'll get there eventually. It's, it will be important for us to continue to monitor what's happening in the electric bus or car industry. But I think you're going to see a time in the next couple of years where costs start coming down, where it makes it more cost, cost efficient for us to, to look at these. But I think right now, because of our needs, that, that diesel is the right way to go. And it takes about, studies are showing it takes anywhere from two to eight hours to charge a school bus electric battery. So that's it.
Thank you. Councilmember Shepherd?
I think we learned an awful lot in this, this discussion. And with my business, I make no decisions unless I have all the answers. I vet my decisions thoroughly. Reason I said what I said is I don't think we have enough information to vet this thoroughly. We heard of a bus that gets 70 miles and everybody took that as factual information. There are many companies that make electric buses and they all get different miles. Just like there's a new truck that's being produced now that gets over 900 miles to a charge that can cross the, almost cross the, can cross the country on one charge, okay? But when the information first came out, that was one of the negatives that was brought up. So as all I'm telling my fellow council members and city staff is, we don't have all the knowledge, okay? So I'm not saying by all. I'm not saying by one. I'm saying we need to have all the information to make the right decision, okay? For instance, what if we all found out that by next year, that there was these buses that got fantastic mileage? And a lot of the negatives were gone. We're stuck in a lease. So is the decision of, decision of leasing these buses the right decision when we'll be stuck with them? So there's all these variables that we're not weighing out because we don't have all the information. I heard just about everyone here say things that they assume was factual and they don't know is factual. But, and what, and there are big questions that weren't answered. How much fuel does one bus use a year? When we hear about, oh, this is going to be a great cost, a great burden to the charter school, what if we found out that one bus uses $20,000 in fuel a year? There are all, all these, all this information that we don't have the answers to weigh out and make the right decision. I don't want to make any wrong decisions. I don't want to say by one. I don't want to say by seven. I don't want to say, let's be locked into a lease with, with technology that's not the right answer. I want to have all the answers. And I think there's a lot of unknowns. I think a lot of us are assuming a lot of different things. We just can't go by, oh, we called another location that has one electric bus. There are multiple manufacturers. There's a lot of things that we have to weigh out, okay? So that's all I'm saying, is that there's a lot. And, and I looked at records for the charter schools. I've seen them. And I've seen us spend more on maintenance on a bus than what we paid for it. And I'm not even adding in the fuel yet. Do we have any idea the amount of fuel one bus uses on average?
They don't get fuel from us. They get it from Lee County. They fill up for the Lee County School Board. They don't fuel up, so I don't track their fuel costs.
So you just proved to me that we have a cost and we have no idea what that cost is. We don't know how many gallons of fuel each bus is using. We don't know. And we're going to make a decision on unknowns. So as all I'm saying is, I'd rather make a decision on having all the facts. I can tell you that my experience with the electric vehicle was negative, 100%. All the what-ifs that were brought up here, I had. Oh, what if it's going to run out? I'm only going to be able to go so far. What about maintenance? Who's going to work on it? All the things that we're all saying, okay? When I went to purchase one for, with a family member and I heard the facts and the information, everything changed. There's also other things that we're not weighing into this decision, safety. There are built-in safety features in electric vehicles that some of these diesel vehicles do not have. So I would like to know, when we compile all this knowledge, are we going to be putting our children in a safer vehicle or a non-safier vehicle? Okay? When it comes to accidents and, and, and performing things that create accidents from happening? You know, there's just so many more questions and, and answers that we need to make the right decision. And that's all I'm saying. I'm not saying by one. I'm not saying by seven. But what I'm real uncomfortable with is being locked into a lease and then we do this investment. is being locked into a lease, and then we do this investigation, and you guys come back and say, wow, we're spending $100,000 on a bus in two years on maintenance. We're spending, you know, who knows, another $100,000 in fuel, you know? Now, all of a sudden, when we put all the numbers together, we're like, oh my God, the infrastructure was irrelevant. But we're all assuming, okay? I was just at a mall on the other side of the bridge, and they just put in 45 chargers at Miramar, Miramar Outlet. They just put in 45 of them. From talking to people there, and I don't know if this is factual, I was told that a certain company that makes electric cars, which is Tesla, paid for a big chunk of it, not all of it, but a big chunk of it. So see, there's all these unknowns, you know? We're putting the boogeyman out there that, oh, the infrastructure is going to cost a lot, and this is going to cost a lot, when we have no idea what these diesel vehicles are truly costing us. So I just, as all I'm saying to my fellow council members, is I just want to make sure we make the right decision. I don't want to find out all this knowledge a year down the road and say, wow, we're stuck with these buses for five years, okay? That's all I'm saying. So I think if we just put this off for a brief moment, not months, just to find out the rest of this knowledge, you know, to have the true cost numbers, the true cost numbers, because I do not want to put a burden on our charter schools as well, just like Councilmember Tate said. She does not want to create a problem for our charter schools with cost. But I'm sure our charter schools are paying for that fuel, which I'm hearing, and we don't know it to be factual, but what I'm learning is that diesel can be as much as $7 to $8 a gallon by the end of summer. And then we do the comparison of what a bus uses in a year's time, I think we're all going to be shocked on the amount of money that we're spending just on fuel, plus the maintenance, plus everything else. So I don't want the boogeyman to be the charging stations, okay? I don't think it's as intense as a lot of us think. If they can throw them up, 45 of them up in Miramar parking lot, I saw one transformer on the ground, is all I saw. Electric company came and put one transformer, and they put 45 charging stations in a row. I don't know the cost of that. I don't want to say it's intense or non-intense. I don't see an issue with having charging stations at the schools, charging stations at fleet. Will that cost a lot? We don't know. I don't want to assume, as all I'm saying is, I think we should spend a little more time so we have accurate numbers. I don't want to be locked into a lease and then a year from now saying, we should've, could've. That's all I'm saying.
And I just wanted to mention, so we, when I talked about the charging station, I just wanted you to be aware that it could skew the data. So yes, we don't know what it is. I just did, to your point, we didn't want you to think we were creating the boogeyman, as you call it. We just, we'll provide the data, but you know, over one bus, it's not as spread out as if it was over seven.
If we had the full data, Mike, you might come to us and say, you know what? It's not advantageous for us to buy one. It's advantageous for us to buy four, or it's advantageous for us to buy six, because if you have all the numbers, you're going to know what the best decision is, and you'll be able to educate us.
Some things that we do know, that is, you know, as you say, we're going to make a decision now and be, you know, pinned down in a year or two years. We know this. A bus, EV bus, the vendor we spoke to, that AJ went to and is getting all his data from is Bluebird. So that's like a nationally recognized school bus vendor. Their stated mile is for a school transport bus is 120, AC running 70. They also advised him that if you put an order in today, unlike the diesel bus, which will be here in nine months, the EV bus won't be here for 18 months. It's a year and a half. So we're not even talking till 2024, till we even took the first shipment. Now, let's think about the technology in batteries, the technology in that whole industry is right now skyrocketing. It's likely we could put an order in for a bus today, and then when we buy, by the time we get it, there's better technology with 200 mile an hour, 200 mile batteries. So all we can do is give you what we know today and the facts that we have today.
You're correct. Part of my decision on buying the test vehicle that I bought was I could buy it or lease it. I convinced my son to lease it because of what you just said, because the battery technology is changing constantly, and you don't want to be stuck with that vehicle. So he leased the vehicle for four years, okay? And the warranty on the batteries is the full lease. So the boogeyman of, we're going to have to pay for expensive batteries, that boogeyman goes away, because our decision might be to lease electric vehicles. So as all I'm telling everyone is, we need more knowledge so that we can have an overall plan, you know, that we can implement over time. If we're in an emergency situation, maybe we have no choice, and we have to buy a couple of these diesel buses right now because of maybe the situation that we are in, we don't have, you know, time is of the essence, I understand that. But what I would like us to do is at least have all the knowledge so we can implement a plan, because we know all the facts, okay? And we know all the cost. And then that's only going to help us with budgeting. When budgeting time comes for the school board and the city, we can say, hey, you know what? You know, because we did this, our fuel costs are going to drop immensely. That's really going to help the charter schools. They're not going to have this high fuel cost. But do I have that answer right now? No, because I don't know if, what the savings would be. So that's all I'm saying. So if there's a critical situation where we have to move quickly, I get that. Maybe we should be thinking about, should we lease or not? That's all I'm saying. I just want to vet everything thoroughly, that's all.
Councilmember Coskin.
Thank you, Mayor. Before I go, it looked like staff had a comment to make, and I just want to hear what it is before I speak.
I agree, I like the buses. It's just that our facility can't work on those buses. We don't have the infrastructure period to, or the mechanics to try and find, we've been trying to find training for our mechanics to do, just get any knowledge on electric vehicles and for our hybrid vehicles. We can't even work on that because we don't have the training. We've been trying to go to Ford, everybody to get the training. No one is willing to get it and to get somebody from the outside to be a mechanic. They get paid a lot more than what we offer at the city. So our facilities and our training, we're not there. It's not only infrastructure, it's just fleet is not there to provide that kind of service. We're trying to get there, just we're not.
Your good. Councilmember Coskin has to floor it.
Is it possible? Okay. First, I want to say I'm fine waiting six or five months to start looking at this. I'm fine getting the seven now diesel. I understand the urgency and the money concerns, so I'm fine with that. I want to know if we've looked at hybrids. We're talking about fully electric, but I want to, when we're doing this comparison in a few months, I also want to talk about hybrids. I know Lee Tran has like 30 hybrid buses, so we can talk to them. And I think they also have a fully electric bus, if I'm not wrong, so that might be a good conversation to have. And that's all I have. Thank you.
City Manager, the. Sounds like you're going to be bringing some additional information back to us in reference to electric vehicles, infrastructures, the cost, you know, for a future discussion, maybe at a COW meeting for any future purchases we may be having?
So here's what I heard, Mr. Mayor. I think my understanding is a little different than yours. I kind of sense that council is agreeable to move forward with this next upcoming order as seven diesel buses, but we owe you additional information as to the comparison total life, cycle cost, diesel versus electric. I don't think we're going to have that ready in time for you to digest that for this upcoming purchase. So I think you're giving me the green light, giving us the green light on the seven to purchase as planned, but before we come back with you for the next stage of bus purchases, we will have given you all of that comparative data that you were requesting.
Yeah, that's what I got out of the discussion. Yep.
Yes.
Okay.
I agree with you.
I think we're good.
All righty then, let's move on to item number four, PDP amendment process. I just want to, it's one of the things that I asked to be added to the conversation. Before we get into this discussion, I wanted to warn my fellow council members after a discussion with our city attorney, that this particular discussion is just in the process itself. It doesn't have anything to do with any upcoming hearing, quasi-judicial hearing, that we may be having on a PDP amendment. It's just in the process of how PDP amendments take place. And the reason that I thought this was important, as you remember in our last council meeting, there was, in our backup material, that it was noted that we do not have a process in place now under our current land development regulations. We used to have a process in the previous land development code that we had prior to, believe, 2019. And I had asked our city attorney to provide that information, which she did, which I asked our executive assistant in our office to disseminate that information to each and every one of you. And when you read through this four-page report, it was pretty explicit exactly how that amendment process would work. One of my concerns personally with not having a process in place is not only the transparency to give the community the opportunity to weigh in on the discussion, because any amendment that we entertain could change the density of that particular development. And I feel that the community has the right to make sure that they can weigh in, they're notified, as was specified in the previous land development code. You know, there's written notice and how far from the distance of the project that that notice has to be given. I think if we try to move forward with any PDP amendment, and we don't have due process for our community, I think it's a disservice if we try to engage in that type of process. So that's why I brought this here before you today. I figured either Mr. City Manager or Vince Cetera could maybe elaborate exactly, or the city attorney could elaborate exactly what process that we had before, and what process do we have in place today, if any?
Mr. Mayor, if I may, I'd like the city attorney's office to go first with that.
Okay.
And then we will follow up as appropriate.
Okay. Madam City Attorney. So I guess my question is, what process did we have in our land use and development regulations pre-2019, which I think we all got a copy of it? And I'll highlight a few of the sections in there. And, you know, the one section, amendments to portions of the PDP development plan shall require the same public notice as required for amendments to PDP development plans in their entirety, including but not limited to the mailing of notice to the city property entities with 500 feet of the boundaries of the property, subject to the PDP development plan. Also, in another section, it goes on to say that if the amendment to the PDP development plans involved a physical change to the development and was previously approved by any parcel or tract of land, the owner or owners of such parcels or tract of land shall join in the application for the amendment. For the purpose of this section, physical change would include, but not limited to, alterations to the design, layout of the structures, other improvements, infrastructure as previously approved for a parcel or tract of land that is noted in the PDP development plan. So there are just a couple of things that I noticed as a highlight in the previous process that we had, and apparently, that process has changed. So, Madam City Attorney, can you give us what type of process that we have in place today?
So yes, the process was basically deleted, and I think there's only a very, very truncated few references to PDPs in our current LDCs. I believe, however, that for any potential amendment that occurs before the language is being put in, and there is new language that is being developed that is very similar to the language that was in the LUDRs, but I believe that staff is following the process that is outlined in the LUDRs, even though the language is not specifically in the LDCs. Mr. Cetero can correct me if I'm wrong, or Mr. Peterson on that point, because really, I think there are very few references to extant PDPs in the LDCs. As I said, that language is being developed, and it's going to be very similar, and we anticipate it will be presented to council soon.
And the reason, you know, that I asked this question, because I have learned that this process isn't in our current land development code, but here we are trying to move forward with a land with a possible alteration to a previous PDP. As we all know, we don't have PDPs any longer, we have PUDs, which is a planned unit development, but we need to have regulations and procedures in place for those previous PDPs, and I don't think we have that now. Now, staff is moving forward, until we adopt specific guidelines to the process, based on the information that we used to use, I'm okay with that. If we're not moving forward in that fashion, and we're just kind of trying to go in through the process here without any set guidelines, I'm uncomfortable with that when you bring that before me, one of the decision makers, because I think that we need to have that process. I know we have a topic of discussion next week that is on the agenda that I haven't approved yet, and that's another thing, you know, I would ask council to weigh on. Is that something that we want to hear? Or I guess, first off, we need to find out what process did Mr. Cetera and your department, what type of process have you utilized since apparently there's an absence in our current land development code and moving forward with the hearing that we're going to have next week?
Well, as you stated previously, and as city attorney stated, there isn't an ironclad surefire process right now in the land development code to retract a portion of a planned development project. There isn't a project, a process for an abandonment either. My understanding on the land development regulations, old ones, there wasn't for an abandonment either, but I know we had one since I've been here, the Old Castle Precast Development off Pandella Road. I think there was another one that we had after the land development code was adopted in August of 19. So that's what we're trying to do now, is get that process in. There are multiple developers in the development that you talked about, and I want to be careful here because that's coming up as a quasi-judicial hearing, but the process we went through was one with legal, where we made sure we received all the documentation from the parties involved, that they approved of it, and then we moved forward, and legal wrote an ordinance. But we're treating it like a quasi-judicial hearing. It will be a quasi-judicial hearing. We're treating it like a PDP adoption or a rezone. We're treating it in the same manner. So I believe that mitigates the concern for public input and transparency. We are telling the public that there will be a public hearing, and some people want out of the planned development, and some people want to stay in. And we'll give you all those reasons in the staff report as to what's happening, and the developers, for the people that, for the portions of the development that want out of the PDP will explain it to you and give you a full explanation, and then it's your decision whether you wish to contract the PDP or not. That's the issue right now. We want them to be able to move that one forward.
Have we notified the community within 500 feet of where this planned development is in writing?
I'll have to, yeah, we did. We're treating it like we were a zoning change or a PDP amendment back in the day.
Okay. So basically, what you're, I'm getting at in this conversation is, you're moving forward very similarly to the old. very similarly to the old land use and development regulation code and bringing...
Bringing it back.
Bringing it back. And we've pretty much applied the same guidelines, if you will, that we used to use, even though it's not really an adopted policy right now.
That's right. I mean, regardless of what happens at the end of the day, they, the development has to be inconsistent with zoning and the comprehensive plan. And that, of course, should be a concern to everyone, you, staff, the surrounding property owners, the developer. We have to assure that. And keep in mind, the PDP was a process that, it was an overlay on top of a project so that the council could put conditions on it. It wasn't a rezoning. It didn't regulate density or land use density in the comprehensive plan. The PUD is different. The PUD is a zoning district. They actually have to apply. The way the city council handled PDPs in the past was like a zone change, which I think was a very smart move. It was handled with a quasi judicial public hearing process where we filed statute. But it wasn't a rezone, but we handled it like one in process.
Yeah, as long as we've notified the community of the intent to have the hearing similar to what we used to do, I'm okay with it.
Okay.
I just wanted to make sure that the public was informed, they had the opportunity to engage in a conversation. So that's one of the reasons why, you know, I put this on the agenda. So if we're moving forward in that fashion, I'm okay.
Okay.
Councilmember Tate.
I'm good.
Any other discussion? Okay. All right, let's move on to item five, internal service charges.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to withdraw this item in the interest of time from today's agenda, and I'll bring it back at a later date.
Okay. Item six is Cape Compass, the strategic plan update.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, I'm going to ask Assistant City Manager Maureen Beis to come to the podium and give you the latest update on where we are in terms of completing our final draft of the strategic plan for your consideration.
Good afternoon, Mayor and council members. What you have before you, the slides that you have before you, is a culmination of the work that has been completed thus far in the city's updated strategic plan. This strategic plan will determine our direction through to 2030. When we last met, all of you voiced your input and provided your thoughts on how we move forward in terms of our goals and objectives, and that's what we're going to talk about today. We took that feedback. We adjusted what we already had. We added to it based on those discussions we had a couple months ago at the yacht club. And that's what we'll discuss briefly. What we're hoping to accomplish today is to get your feedback and the green light from all of you to move forward with our goals and objectives. And you'll see when we get to the slides, each slide also have some, has waypoints or action items. Those are items that staff developed. I don't plan on discussing those today. They're there for you to view, but you'll see those when the final document comes back for adoption. So I started this presentation with our agenda, and I kind of went over that briefly. And I wanted to remind all of you our vision and our mission. This is the information that's found on our website today, and then just a draft of what the cover of the document might look like. You've seen this graphic. All of you helped to develop the graphic here, and our new guiding principles and core values. I wanted to include them in the presentation just as a reminder, because it was some time ago we discussed these guiding principles and to sort of set the stage for where we're going with our strategic priorities. The strategic priorities, these shouldn't be new to any of you. We discussed these. However, we did work on the goal statements that accompany the strategic priorities. But we have identified the following six strategic priorities for this plan: city services and amenities, communication, economy, education, workforce, fiscal stability, infrastructure, and environmental sustainability. You'll see these strategic priorities and their goal statements again on the following So what we do, what I did in the presentation for the next several slides is I broke down the six strategic priorities. I restated the goal statement, so you'll see that over and over again on each slide. What's new is the objective related to each of these strategic priorities. So city services and amenities, the goal is to deliver exceptional city services and high-quality amenities. And one of the objectives that we have identified is related to public safety, keep Cape Coral safe through public safety service excellence, professionalism, accountability, and transparency. And as you can see, those are some of the waypoints that staff has come up with, and those will be included in the final document as well. Our next objective related to city services and amenities is parks and recreation, provide a vibrant, accessible, and diverse recreation and open space system. Again, under city services and amenities is community beautification, maintain an attractive community and preserve the integrity of residential neighborhoods and commercial corridors. If you want me to slow down, I will. We have an objective related to community services, improve the well-being of individuals, families, and neighborhoods through strong community partnerships, community-based programs, and innovative practices. Then we're on to our next strategic priority, which is communication. And the goal related to communication is to cultivate and engage an informed community and workforce. The objective is related to public communications is keeping our residents, businesses, and visitors well-informed. Next objective related to the communication strategic priority is community engagement, promote public participation in key issues, policy development, and community priorities. We have a strategic priority related to marketing and promoting the city regionally, nationally, and internationally as a destination and place for business. We have an objective related to, specific to employee communications and enhancing internal communications, employee appreciation efforts, and employee engagement opportunities. Our next strategic priority is economy, education, and workforce. Our goal is to create a community of prosperous residents, thriving neighborhoods, and successful businesses. Our first objective is related to economic and business development and creating an economically balanced community. We have an objective related to the South Cape redevelopment and facilitating the emergence of a vibrant urban village where people of all ages live, work, shop, and are entertained. Community workforce is another objective we have related to economy, education, and workforce, and ensuring employers have access to a talented and skilled workforce. We created an objective related to education and promoting educational excellence, innovative learning, and continuous improvement in all schools. We have an objective proposed related to visitor and resident experience and establishing Cape Coral as a destination for arts, culture, special events, and ecotourism. Our next strategic priority revolves around fiscal stability. The goal is to maintain a financially sound government and a high-performing organization. The objective is organizational performance excellence and being the best at providing municipal services. The next objective related to fiscal stability is financial strength and responsibility, operate a fiscally resilient municipal services organization. Also related to fiscal stability is an objective related to information systems and cyber resilience, improve service delivery, excuse me, digital readiness, and knowledge sharing between departments while implementing strategies that build cyber resilience. We have an objective related to our workforce and fiscal stability, attract, retain, and develop a skilled, creative, and high-performing workforce. Fiscal stability in city facilities, make smart investments in city facilities to keep pace with growth, improve service, and reduce expenses. Our next strategic priority involves infrastructure. Our goal related to infrastructure is to invest in resilient infrastructure. Our first objective is related to broadband and ensuring all residents, businesses, and city facilities have access to affordable and reliable high-speed internet services. We have an objective related to infrastructure concerning mobility and improving multimodal mobility on roads, bridges, and other transportation facilities to reduce congestion, connect neighborhoods, and improve safety. Our next objective is related to water and wastewater and providing cost-effective, environmentally responsible water, irrigation water, and wastewater collection services. Our final strategic priority involves environmental sustainability. The goal is to preserve and protect Cape Coral's natural resources for current and future generations. Our first objective revolves around watershed protection and safeguarding the city's water Our next environmental sustainability objective involves the tree canopy and preserving and growing Cape Coral's tree canopy to address changing climate conditions, increase shade, reduce water pollution and street flooding, alleviate heat stress, provide noise buffers, and provide essential wildlife habitat. We have an objective for climate resiliency, reduce the city of Cape Coral's energy use, fossil fuel emissions, and improve energy efficiency. Next objective is land conservation, protect and preserve endangered, critical habitat, and environmentally sensitive lands. Next is an objective related to endangered and threatened species, conserve the habitats of endangered and threatened animal and plant species. That's a quick overview of the objectives that we've developed related to the input that we received from all of you and from the community and from our employees as well. Our next steps is we will take this draft plan, we'll adjust it based on any of your feedback, and then we'll bring the final document to city council at a regular meeting for adoption.
Thank you. Any questions or comments? Councilmember Hayden.
Thank you. Appreciate that. Appreciate all the hard work that staff put in, especially developing the waypoints on this. As I read through this whole thing, one thing I wanted to ask about, what are the measurables here? How are we going to keep track of our strategic initiatives here? For instance, there was one in there about sidewalks within one mile of schools. Is there a way to put in that we'll accomplish this by the year 2026, let's say?
So if I can take a stab at that, once we get the green light from you to move forward with this, we're going to develop the next step in the process is the metrics.
Okay. All right. That's good enough. The second step was, I know there was discussion at the retreat about our, I have no problem with our mission statement, but there was some discussion about the vision statement of the, to be America's preeminent waterfront community. Did you, as a staff, feel like that was presentable enough, workable enough, or is there a way to take another shot? I don't have any ideas right now, but to take another shot at that because I think there was some confusion about what preeminent waterfront and how those two words connected with what we were trying to accomplish in a vision.
I know that when we had the discussion with the Institute of Government, what they had shared with you was different from the vision and mission that we had posted on our website and had in our documents. And we actually liked what we already had.
Okay.
I think it was clearer than what the Institute of Government was sharing with you. So, but ultimately, this is your vision and this is your mission. So it's not necessarily staff's, although we help you and inform you to arrive at that. So it's ultimately whatever you're comfortable with.
If anybody could come up with any different wording or a possible option, I'd like to see it. I don't know that there is one. I don't know if there's one. But if there's anything else that had been tossed around as a possibility, if there isn't...
Yeah, we haven't spent a whole lot of, from a staff's perspective, we haven't spent a whole lot of time on the mission or the vision. Our, we were focused purely on the objectives, the strategic objectives and identifying waypoints.
Okay. Okay. I'm trying to think if there was, yeah, it seemed like we, with our core principles and objectives, we provided ways to accomplish each of those. Redesigning the city's website seemed a little vague to me. So if we can get a little bit more specific about what might happen, what might happen there. And I'd written a note about, there was something in there about a staff manager for, I think, for one of the waypoints, maybe working with, was it the school district or working with education?
Yes.
Wasn't exactly sure what that was.
So here's what some communities do, council member. They appoint, and I'm going to point to my experience in Fort Lauderdale, they have a chief education officer. And that person is assigned to the city manager's office, and that person is an official liaison between city government and the various schools that are within the city.
Okay.
That's all schools, school district, higher education...
Okay.
Technical colleges. And so I know we have a very close relationship with our charter school system, and you have a very close relationship with your peers on the elected body of the school board. But on a day-to-day basis, you know, I think we're lacking the connection between city staff and staff at the school level. And that includes all schools, public and private schools that operate in the city. And so we had, since we were making education, the economy, and workforce a strategic priority, we felt that we need to take a look at, and this goes back to the comments that council member Nelson made about making sure that we prepare students in the workforce for future employment opportunities. I think we need to engage all educational institutions that are in Cape Coral. And right now, from my perspective at the staff level, we're not doing it. We currently don't have the resources to do that, but that's certainly something that we've identified as something that we would like to work towards.
Okay. So that also could include possibly connecting our area businesses who are looking for specialized workforce working with them and connecting them with higher education and how those two can come together. Also on city facilities, and maybe it's, wasn't for this particular strategic plan, but I know there's been some discussion about possible looking at a new city hall at some point and whether that belonged in here as a...
Yeah, I don't remember if we included that specifically as a waypoint because it might be that we're not ready for it yet.
I don't see it in here. The fire station, sleep facility, and all that's included, but I don't see that in there. That's it.
Thank you.
Okay. Any other comments or questions? Councilmember Welsh.
I have to agree with councilmember Hayden, if we could, maybe all of us come together or even staff come up with a different vision than preeminent waterfront community. Our community is much more than just waterfront. So, you know, there was a time when we were the waterfront wonderland, and that's what got people here. But now we're starting to fill in all the other roads. So if, before we go to the final of this, I'm going to workshop some stuff, but if anyone else can think of anything, I'd be willing to switch that too. Thanks.
Yeah, I agree. I think we could probably come up with a better vision statement. And so maybe give staff that opportunity first, maybe bring us back some suggestions at a future meeting, and then we can move forward from there. Other than that, I think staff did a great job. I know you kind of took over this role three-quarters of the way through this process. So just wanted to thank staff for all their hard work and making sure that we finally get across that finish line. Any other comments?
Okay. Thank you very much. All right. Next item for discussion, EnterGov update.
Sure. I'm going to have Mr. Cetero come to the podium, but I'll get the conversation started. As you know, Mr. Mayor, last Saturday, we implemented an intensive effort to reduce the backlog of outstanding building permits that are coming through the system. The backlog was caused by a variety of issues, not just one. And that includes just a lot of construction activity in our community. It included issues that we faced with adding new positions and employee turnover, and of course, transitioning to an entirely new online customer services center for building permits. So again, we worked, we notified... So again, we worked, we notified the industry that we were really at the point, we were at a critical point, let's say, with the building department. We were now processing, I think, well over 280 new building permit applications a day, which proves that the Intergov system, although it has caused a lot of hiccups along the way, but it proves that the system works because we are now more, we have more than doubled the amount of permits that we were processing on a daily basis. But we just had this growing backlog, and we were adding 280 permits a day to this backlog. And it was just getting to the point where it was just operationally unsustainable for us to continue to operate in that manner. And so we asked the industry in consultation with the CCCIA and the BIA for the ability to implement a temporary pause in accepting new permits. All the other activities, inspections, COs, all of that continued to operate as business as usual. However, we just needed a ceasefire, if you will, on new permit requests. And so we put that into motion effective last, really after close of business on Friday. And we've had a dedicated staff. It fluctuates on a daily basis, but we've been using a lot of overtime. They've worked the weekends, so they plan to work on Easter Sunday if necessary. Hopefully, we won't get to that point. I think the backlog has been reduced now from as high, I think we were at 4,700 or so outstanding building permits, and we're down to about 1,600 or 1,700. I know we sent the update probably an hour ago. So we are making progress. I want to thank the industry. I want to thank the council. I want to thank the public and our employees for being patient and for working with us on this effort. We're going to try to get that backlog down to, and staff is going to kill me for saying this word, near zero, but that's our goal, to reduce it as much as we possibly can. And then when we flip the switch on Monday morning, the 18th, we'll be taking new permits on from that point forward. Mr. Cetero, do you want to add anything?
Just a couple of items. I appreciate it. And Mr. Hernandez had given you the latest numbers. One of the challenges that we had, when we looked at the numbers, you may have seen some reports that there were 6,900. That was a combination of emails that had come in inquiring about their permits as well as the permits themselves. And what happens there is you receive a lot of duplication because people will just write. So we put them all into one basket, and then we broke them out in categories as to how we're handling them. But as was stated just a minute ago, a little less than an hour ago, Melissa sent a new update out stating that we're at 1,593. And we started at 4,347 on the permits. So we've made a lot of progress, as you just heard. And hopefully, we'll be in a position where we won't need staff to come in Sunday, but we expect some people may want to. And then Saturday, we'll have it as well. So we have another two and a half workdays this week and then Saturday as well. So we feel comfortable we're going to be in a position, if it's not totally eliminated or down to zero, we're going to be close where they'll be absorbed, I think pretty well, into the new permits that we're going to get and then go through that process. One of the things that we've done, and I'll close with this, is it just, it came up in your report that you just heard from, on the strategic plan, excuse me, from Maureen, about streamlining processes. One of the things that we did that I think was very helpful when we spoke to Mr. Hernandez, I guess it was a week ago yesterday, when we pitched the idea to him, was that we just took all the permits that didn't require a building review and said, a building code review, excuse me, that's an important word, code, important word, said, we need to just issue them. And we catch things as we can through the inspection process. And if they require a review, we do the best that we can. But we needed to just do something drastic, and we did. And it was unsustainable where we were going because we were so far behind. And we talked it through a lot and then had a good meeting with Mr. Hernandez last Tuesday. And then I followed the events. I was out of town at a family wedding and followed the events with my staff. And it really worked. I mean, we think it was good, and we appreciate your support very much.
Thank you. I will say that, you know, I want to thank staff for all their hard work. You know, a lot of the individuals are coming in, staying late on their own time. They don't have to be here. So make sure you get the message out that we appreciate your hard work. Also, we want to make sure that we don't find ourselves in this position again. So I'm kind of interested, we took some drastic measures as you had stated. Are we going to continue down that path moving forward? So we don't find ourselves back in this situation again?
Well, obviously, we want to avoid that. I think what caused that was the inability to process permits the way we normally would have under Tracket due to some of the stops and starts we had with Intergov. That coupled with the fact that we weren't able to process some to the end because of some technical issues. And one of the major issues that we found a fix for, for the legacy permits, those are the ones that came in before February 22nd on the old system. There were certain fees that we're not populating in the new system. And we had to have that. We couldn't just stop and say, okay, we're going to just download everything, give it to you manually, and then re-upload it later. It just wouldn't have happened. That slowed us down tremendously, and we weren't issue, able to issue literally thousands of permits because of that. And that's what created the glut. And then, of course, being shut down for two and a half days for the conversion, which we had to do back in, I'm going like February 16, 17 in there. People came in, of course, on Monday, and you literally had five, 600 people coming into the front counter and so forth. And then permit runners were coming in with 19, 20, 25 single-family building permits at one time. The system wasn't handling it the way it is now because we've been able to do, IT has been able to work on some fixes with Tyler, and we were able to do some workarounds on the legacy permits that came over. That was the real problem. Everything wasn't new in Intergov. It was old and new, and it didn't mesh properly. And we had a few major issues that we had to work through. So the new system is up and running. It was on February 22nd. We're doing, we're making fixes to it every day that are needed. And we are positioning ourselves without this backlog to be able to then meet our statutory requirements. And I'll close by saying that if we find ourselves in a situation like this again, we just have to find more workarounds on the review side to get those out as quickly as possible.
All right. Thank you. Councilmember Tate?
Vince, I have a couple of questions. First, it might be for Michelle. I keep hearing about speed issues. Has the speed issue been resolved on the Intergov? And I know Bill Johnson's here for the construction industry. Are you still hearing that same? He's saying yes. So I'm still hearing that speed is still our problem.
Michelle Hoffman, IT Director. Yes, we have made some adjustments on speed. We made an adjustment this last week that Tyler had recommended. We changed something. It didn't seem to have the effect that Tyler thought it was going to have. We plan on making another change tomorrow and adding some additional servers in a load balancing configuration, which we do think will have a significant impact. We just, we did get information back from LA County. They responded to our requests. We've looked at that. That's how they do it. They have extra servers in there in a load balance configuration. So we're going to go ahead and copy what they've been working on for a long time.
So are you feeling a little more confident that come Monday morning when we have this, you know?
Big influx of...
Yes, that our system's going to be able to handle it.
That's what we're, that's why we're doing the change. We expect that we'll have a lot of people trying to get on it at the same time.
Are we testing it before Monday or?
Yeah, we're going to put it into place tomorrow, and the system's still up. People are still logged in and paying their bills and looking at, you know, scheduling inspections. So we'll be able to tell immediately on tomorrow.
Okay. Is there any kind of, I've seen all the communication on the permits that we're doing, is there any kind of communication going out through the building industry on maybe ways to be more efficient in the way they're using the program? Because it seems like most of the problems are coming from that. I mean, your workforce is doing an amazing job at DCD, but are we, do we need like to do some classes, some one-on-one training? I know we had the hotline, but is everybody up to snuff? And I know that the construction industry, Billy, are they working through this system? Okay. All right. And...
Yeah. We are updating our operating procedures when we find a better way for people to do things. We're going to have to go through the whole process over again, and that's fine. That's what we're here for. We're going to work with the industry, keep working. Stephen will come in here and do more workshops with our staff and IT staff in this room, and we'll just do it again. What we did over a month ago at the CCCIA dinner was really just a taste of how to use it and answer questions. The in-depth training came later. We had another session, but we need to do that again, get better at our tutorials on the internet and all that. When we have a chance to literally breathe a little bit, we'll get that done.
Okay. Yeah, that's what I'm hoping for come Monday, that it's a much smoother system because you've made such huge progress. And where it says residential construction 179, that's new, single-family, or that's just?
It's both. The way, it's both. The way Intergov tracks the permitting for residential, we're working on splitting it out, but it tracks it in three main categories or put into one.
Okay.
New construction, remodel, and addition.
Are all in this one?
Right. And new construction, I mean, in addition technically is new construction.
Right.
But when we say new construction, we mean a new single-family home or a new duplex or apartment building. But we're working with Michelle's staff to try to split those out for reporting purposes.
And what about commercial? Because I don't see that in anywhere in here. Is there any, or maybe I don't see...
I'm not sure. I'm looking at the same document that you are...
Oh, well, this is just the breakdown of the permits processed and it...
Oh, the permit, they're all in one. For the information we gave you, we just put everything in one big category. We can break it out, though, because we have that broken out.
No, that's fine. I just want to make sure everybody is getting completed.
Yeah. We have numbers of charts and graphs and all that.
Okay. All right. Good. All right. Well, I appreciate it. I just really appreciate the employees stepping up to the plate and taking the hit for working the overtime. I mean, I know they get paid, but still, money isn't everything when it comes to some of the abuse that they took and everything.
I appreciate it.
I'm glad we could help a little bit.
Thank you.
Okay. Any other questions on that or comments? Okay. CNN will move to item eight, our last item of discussion. I brought forward, just want to talk briefly, addendum for the council office personnel discussion. Just as we all are aware, we have a open position within our council office. I will tell you that at discussions with HR, they were going to post the position on Monday internally and externally and accept applications for 15 business days. They recommended at least seven, I thought, at least 15. So we gave everyone the opportunity to submit, hopefully to have more candidates within that town frame. I thought the process that I would utilize is to develop a interview panel amongst council that could review all of the candidates and maybe narrow it down to five individualities. Possibly by doing that, they can identify and speak, maybe either by phone or by Zoom to get that five candidate list down, and then bring in those five candidates for a in-person interview. And then that panel would make a recommendation to council collectively as a whole. So that's the process that I was thinking in order to fill that particular position. I was thinking, you know, maybe three council members. I didn't know if council has a desire to have the executive assistant that we have downstairs now on the panel so they, so she can contribute to the conversation. So I'm thinking maybe three council members and one administrative assistant, Connie, to be on that interview board. My preference would be myself not to be on that board. This particular individual, I think, will be serving council. I kind of like to see us go back where maybe Connie is utilizing myself, districts one, two, and three, as far as helping us. Of course, she can help anyone. And then maybe the new individual would kind of work and be responsible for the council members on the other side of the room, which would be councilmember Nelson, councilmember Welsh, councilmember Long, and councilmember Cosson. So my preference would be at least, at least three of you. And I don't have a problem with all four of you being on that interview board with Connie, so it would be five total. If that's how you guys decide, that's kind of what my thought process. I just wanted to bring it for a short discussion today to see if everybody's in line with that way moving forward. Would you rather have three council members and Connie, four council members and Connie? And if so, who would those three council members be? So that's what I'm asking today. Councilmember Welsh?
Thank you. Just a quick question for the city manager. I was on the assumption that we only had three employees that we hired, and that would be the city manager, the city attorney, and the city auditor. So am I incorrect in that assumption as our roles as city council?
My understanding is that there was an ordinance adopted by the then-city council that created these positions as direct report positions to the city council.
That's true. That's a true statement.
I will say that I'm working in conjunction with HR. And HR will be present during these interviews.
Okay.
To make sure that we are abiding by whatever city requirements are in new hires in the process. So they will be a part of the process from the beginning to the end as well.
Okay. I just wanted to make sure that it was, that we're, you know, following the correct steps. If you'd like our side of the room to be present during interviews, that'd be fine. I would like to review the applications. I don't necessarily need to be the deciding factor, though, so.
Well, I think what we do is we develop a interview board and at least get those, because we don't know how many applications there'll be, maybe at least try to get that down to five, and then bring them in for a in-person interview. That's my recommendation, but...
Are you also suggesting we keep the same NB 108 classification that was currently in that position?
Yes.
Okay.
All right. Councilmember Nelson?
Thank you, Mayor. So just to clarify, if we did have the four of us, and I definitely think Connie should be involved for a lot of reasons, mainly fit, fit reasons, purpose of fit. Would we then, we would be then interviewing each one individually, correct? Because, okay.
Yeah, and what my intent was, maybe to get with HR, I think that the board should pretty much work on the same premise and a checklist.
Agreed. And we need a form.
Maybe to rank those individuals. Since, due to Sunshine, we don't do it collectively. We have to do it individually. I think we should have a baseline for all council members in their interview process to work down a particular list and rank the individuals accordingly. Once that's done, maybe all of that information will be given to me, and then I will send out a notice of the ranking. out a notice of the ranking, and then that will tell us the five individuals that we're going to bring in for in-person interviews.
Okay.
And then that same board, through that same process, again, and rank maybe the top three, and then we'll bring it back for a discussion at a council meeting.
Yeah, I think we need to do similar to what we did when we hired the city manager. I believe we had a form, a ranking form, that looked at fit, skills, communication, styles, all those things. So I think definitely we need that. And yes, to having Connie involved in the process, because she's going to have to manage this individual, supervise, assist in supervising them, so I think it makes sense. Thank you, mayor.
And you're okay with the yourself, council member Welsh, council member Long, and council member Cosden being on that?
Absolutely.
On that board?
Mm-hmm. Thank you.
Council member Cosden.
I just want to say that I'm good with that, too. Thank you.
Council member Long?
Madam City Attorney.
So the board is going to meet individually with the members, the applicants? So there's not going to be a meeting of three council members and two?
No, we will probably do, my fault is, the first segment of the interview process will be done, completed either by phone or by Zoom. If the individuals are here locally and the council members want to meet them one-on-one, that's okay, you know, that's their prerogative. But that's kind of what I thought, to at least get it there down to the five individuals. Council member Hayden.
Yeah, that was my question about meeting individually and not as a group, just to, just to make sure.
Okay, all right, that's the process we utilize. I'll work with HR to develop maybe the outline that we're going to utilize in the interview process, and I'll make sure that that's given to each, each one of you. All right. Any roundtable discussions?
Mr. Mayor, I have one.
Yes, council member Tate.
In my district, there are several condominiums that have contacted me concerning the new bridge discussion that's going on with Lee County, and I had, thought I had asked you to see if we could put that on a roundtable discussion with Lee County to come here. And they're getting very nervous, so I was wondering if we could do that. If you hadn't done it already, could you see if they are willing to come here and settle the nerves of several of the associations that are right on the main street?
Yeah, probably it's going to be staff that would provide that insight. So maybe Mr. City Manager could reach out to the county to see if maybe staff, maybe...
Their staff, right?
Yeah, their staff.
Yeah, their staff.
Their staff could come and give either a presentation, maybe at a future meeting. That way, the public's a little more informed.
Yeah, I think they just need to be informed, that's all, here in our city.
Okay.
Upcoming Cal?
Yes, please.
Okay. Okay, any other roundtable discussions? Seeing none, time and place, future meeting. We have a regular meeting, the Cape Coral City Council is scheduled for Wednesday, April 20th, '22, beginning at 4:30 PM here in council chambers. Is there a motion for adjournment?
Time is.
Second?
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Meeting adjourned.